Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. Byron Hickey, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Joanne Kogle, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. John Anchor, District 9. At-large Council, Travis Chambers, District 10. At-large Council, Lindsey McLemore, Clerk of Council, and City Attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
Good morning and thank you for joining us for our work session today. Because we don't have a quorum in attendance here, we won't be able to vote on anything. We've got two resolutions excusing councilors' absence. So those will be voted on at the next meeting. So this will truly be purely a work session. We will however, begin it as we begin all of our meetings. That's by asking God's presence on these proceedings. So I'm gonna ask our Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin if she wouldn't mind leaving us in prayer.
Absolutely. We will pray according to my faith and my tradition. Father God, we come now as humbly as we know how. Given thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Father, our lying down last night and our early rising this morning, realizing that it could have been the other way. Father, we thank you for this council. We thank you for this community, this place that we call home, and the business that we will conduct today. And we thank you for every person who is represented here today. We will be so careful to give you the honor, the glory, and the praise. And it is in his name that we do pray. Amen.
Thank you ma'am. If you would though, please join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. We will not be able to vote on the minutes. So we will move directly to our first item on the agenda. And that is the Youth Council Placemaking Grant Award. And we're delighted to have Sadie Crozick. I've never said that right. So I'm just gonna start Sadie K. How about that? And Tavari, dang gum, where are you? Tavari Turner, who was in our community for a number of years working with the Boys and Girls Club. He is now working with GMA in Atlanta. So we'll let y'all come to the podium. Lisa?
Okay, yes, we're gonna ask them to come forward along with the President of our Youth Advisory Council, Lucille Chattery, if they will come. And of course, our advisor who is here. We have Tiaja Hollis and Holly Browder, who is the Director of Parks and Recreation. Because this grant, of course, is going to benefit them. If you recall, a council approved a resolution for us to apply for and if approved, accept a grant, a youth placemaking grant through the Georgia Municipal Association's Georgia Forward and the Georgia City's Foundation. And of course, they are here now. And I'm gonna ask the President of the Youth Advisory Council, Lucille, to tell us a little something about this project that the Youth Council voted on and has been awarded. So again, she was our President-elect at the time we went through this project and through the application. And she is now this year's President. So Lucille, if you will go to the, and press that button there.
Well, first off, I wanted to start off by saying thank you for giving us this grant for the Kindness Rocks Project. When we were first planning on what type of problem we wanted to tackle, we wanted to see where we could foster, support, connection, and community, where we could help create that. And we thought through the Kindness Rocks Project, we were able to support positivity and kind affirmations where it could be needed. So we're really thankful to be able to start this project from start to finish. And we're really excited to see where it goes. So thank you so much.
Good morning and thank you all for giving us a little time today. And congratulations on what you're doing as leaders in your community to empower your young people, your future leaders. Because they will be the ones making decisions for us. And when you engage them early and help them understand they have a role to play and an important voice and their ideas and thoughts matter, that's good for all of us and it's good for your community. So we are thrilled to come alongside you guys as the Georgia Municipal Association and our nonprofit, Georgia Forward, to help these young people have an impact and have a real experience of changing their community. So thank you guys and congratulations. And we'd love to turn over the big check, which will proceed, a real check, and get a photo with all of you guys. So if that's possible, do that now.
Absolutely.
And before we do that, I'm gonna ask Holly just to talk a little bit more about how this project is gonna benefit her area in Pop Austin.
Absolutely, thank you Ms. Goodwin. So the project's gonna be done at Pop Austin Recreation Center. Pop Austin is our facility for therapeutic recreation individuals. At that facility, we do a garden annually throughout the year for our participants to participate and grow vegetables. They grow flowers. And then they utilize those in actually cooking them for themselves. So it gives them some life skills and social skills to learn as part of that process. Having the students come along is just a bonus for us to be able to engage them with our therapeutic individuals to extend, as she said, the kindness that we all wanna see in our community. And we just look forward to this project in the fall. When it cools off slightly, we'll be able to go out and put these there. And our beds that are there are ADA accessible, of course, because it's at our therapeutic facility. So all individuals have the same opportunities to be able to engage and fund creative activities.
Think we wanna photo op with the big check in front.
Before y'all get away today, if I don't impose too much, I'd love for Sadie and Tavari to talk just a minute about Georgia Forward. It's an incredible opportunity. Empowering our young folks is one of the pillars of that organization.
Yes, thank you Mary Henderson. Georgia Forward is a nonprofit within the Georgia Municipal Association. And we have some key focus areas that are focused on child and youth well-being and leadership development. The ways we do that is focusing on childhood literacy initiatives. We've actually been in Columbus with a book drive and dropping off and donating books to Dorothy Height. That's a big part of what we do is trying to engage you all, local elected officials and leaders, to say, let's collectively have this conversation about what is it gonna take to empower our youngest citizens with the tools and resources they need, which is literacy. Because education is the key to future success, but literacy is what unlocks education. And we realize that as a state now. And so our roles, we're trying to help get the best resources, the best practices to our leaders so that you can coordinate all of the efforts in your community around childhood literacy. The next piece that we do is engaging in teenagers, that next generation up through our Youth Councils. So helping support Youth Councils, giving them training when they come together, empowering them to do projects and learn what it means to be civically engaged. What does it mean to help lead in whatever capacity you have at that time? And then we also do the Young Game Changers Program, which Columbus hosted our Young Game Changers, and that's for young professionals. Tavari was a part of that. He was an incredible participant. And that's kinda why we grabbed him. We saw that talent. So Young Game Changers was here a few years ago. That's where we bring young professionals from all over the state to partner with local people between the ages of 25 and 40 to listen to the community and to propose big ideas of ways to move forward. And so I hope you guys have that final report and are looking at it often. We are currently in Athens Clark County with our Young Game Changers Program. And we'll be wrapping that up in November. We'll do the same thing. They'll make a public presentation to the community with some big ideas and plans of how to move those forward. So thank you for the time to talk about this initiative. We're a nonprofit and we welcome donations and partners all the time. So it's important to say that as well.
Thank you. Thank you both for it. It's an incredible program through GMA. Alright, where do you wanna?
Close as possible. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Take care.
Good to see you. Good to see you. Yeah, I missed the chance to meet you guys. But we're delighted if I should ever be involved.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, our first up on the work session agenda, we're gonna call Chief Mathis, who is gonna come and provide a public safety update on the Columbus Police Department.
Mayor, Council? Thank you for allowing us to present this morning. I think we got some good information for you. One of the things I like to preface when we start talking about numbers is that providing numbers is the only way we as law enforcement can quantify what we're doing. So when we throw numbers out there about the murder rate or the murders that we've had, trust me, one is too many. But the only way we quantify or qualify what progress we're making is to collect this data and then provide that data. Over the last few weeks, I've watched some of the council meetings where people have come up to the podium and thrown out statistics and numbers. I have no idea where some of them get their numbers. Certainly, they do not call us to get the accurate numbers. If they do, Rod Graham will provide them with the most accurate numbers that we have at the time. You have to understand though, these numbers change daily. So if someone gets numbers and they hold on to them for a month, and then a month later, they give a Neighborhood Watch Program or a speech and they talk about those numbers they got a month ago, those numbers very well have changed over the last month. But before we get started, before I call Rod up here, I do wanna just talk, go over some things that we've accomplished just in the last year or two. We currently have 11 open positions that will be filled by January Academy. The only reason they're not full right now is because there's no need us to hire the 11 now and have them just hanging around for three or four months before the academy starts. Our 911 center, our dispatchers, completely full. When I started two years ago, we were about half-staffed. It's completely full with dispatchers now. And also that you guys provided me money to completely redo my 911 center. And if you have not had the opportunity to go see it, I wish that you would. Because when I first started, it was very much just repair. Today, it's a state-of-the-art dispatch center. Today, we currently have 12 motor units. That's double than we had when I started. 12 motor units is still not enough. I need 16, but I'm gonna add as we go along. We have a 20-man SWAT team. We have a mobile field force. When I started with 16 people, today, every person on the police department's trained to be a mobile field force. The Uptown Detail. I have a five-person unit just assigned to the Uptown Detail Tuesday through Saturday from 10 to 6. So we have five police officers from the historic district all the way down to 14th Street. So those five police officers handle any calls dispatched in that particular area. I have a six-person community policing unit, not counting supervisor. And they're actually here today, probably talk about the homelessness issue that we got because they handle about 90% of the issues that we have, amongst other things that they do. That unit was non-existent two years ago. I have a 25-man Spec Ops unit. Have a narcotics unit, have a, two shifts of Spec Ops personnel. I have a gang unit. And today, I'm proud to tell you that I got a four-person K-9 unit. Columbus has not had a K-9 unit in years. So we got four Canines out there working the street over a 24/7 period. This year, this last month, Rod Graham pulled the numbers. And where our self-initiated calls are up 20,000 compared to last year. And remember, self-initiated calls are calls that the police officers are not dispatched to, that they call out on their own, which could be a traffic stop, could be getting out with a stranded motorist, could be getting out with debris in the road, but any call they get that's not dispatched. I have a three-person digital forensic investigator unit that is some of the best in the state, the best trained in the state. We've redone the zone unit to make a 24 zones in the city that's gonna reduce our response time. Real-time crime center, $1.6 million. Then we have 75 flock cameras throughout the city. And I know this is a lot of controversy going around about the Red Speed. Red Speed, eventually, we have 40 of the Red Speed cameras in the school zones. Currently, we have 20. And those, each one of those also have a flock camera. And a lot of people ask me, say, well, that, it's just to generate money. It's just to generate funds. And I ask people, what is a child's life worth? If it's your child, what's a child's life worth? It's not generate money. It's to keep people safe. But what we are gonna do with the funds that are generated is spend 100% on it, on our training. And we're gonna redo our range that's probably not been redone in 35 years. And we're gonna add top-notch training to the police department. We also, this year, switched over to, and thank you to the mayor and council, to a new RMS system that is state-of-the-art. And it's gonna help the police officers both safety and efficiency. And those are just a few things that we've done over the last 24 months. And I know it's 100% based on the things that you guys have allowed us to do. And I appreciate that. Now I'd like to call Rod up to go over the stats and the data that we've had over the last year.
Thank you Chief. Well, good morning everyone. Has it already been highlighted this morning? What I'll be discussing will be just a snapshot of the data. It won't be its entirety, but this snapshot will consist of from the first and second quarter comparison between the years of 2021 through 2025. And then you also will see information, receive information off of how that compares with our staffing, how having a fully-staffed organization has an impact on the crime. There is a direct correlation. If I can remember how to advance this. Oh, there you go. Okay, so there are discussions, the first and second quarter for Part 1 crime comparison for the year of 2021 to 2025. And then also looking at the first and second quarters for sworn personnel comparison, again, from years of 2021 through 2025. We're gonna show you a quick video that's gonna highlight some of the information that Chief Mathis has already mentioned to you earlier. What you're seeing in that video is various different phases in the police department. There are various different units in there. Starting with training, as you heard Chief Mathis mention earlier about the SWAT team, added members to the SWAT team, some equipment that we've been able to obtain there, as well as some of the technology that's also been able to be attained, such as what's, everyone comes down to the police department to see now is the Real-Time Crime Center. For those of you, again, that have not been to the Real-Time Crime Center, I highly recommend that you take a few minutes out of your day at some point in time, go to that Real-Time Crime Center. And then also, you saw some of the mobile force, field force training in that video as well. So let's start looking at some of the numbers. So when you look at year 2021 and year 2022, '23, '24, '25, what the focus point here is by the first, second quarters of each one of those years. And because of time, I won't go through all of this by each quarter. But what's most significant is you look in the year of 2021, look in the total column for that particular year. 2021, year first quarter and the second quarter, and then the total, which will be on your right-hand side, then you go all the way down to the bottom. And you can see what the total Part 1 crimes were for that 2020 year of being, for the first and second quarter, would be 3,738. Then you make that comparison to year '22, and you can see that it is 3281. But what's most important at this day and age is looking at '23, '24, and '25 in those same roles, the total. Look at the second quarter for 2023, go all the way down to the bottom and see the total of 1977. Then, if you look at the second quarter in 2024, all the way down to the bottom is 1883. And even when you compare those two years in each one of those quarters, you see for the total in '23, for first and second quarter is 3983. But then you look over to 2024, you see 3543. What am I telling you? Our crime is going down. When you look at it by the quarter, it's going down. It's going down with the start of 2023. And it started in the second quarter. And that, as everyone know, that is when we had a change in the department. That's when us, Chief Mathis came in, actually, in May of the second quarter. So from that point, everything that we have been doing is indicative of our crime going down. Would that mean we on the right track? We are on the right path. We wanna stay on this path. So we may come before you periodically, asking for various things to keep us on that right path. Because we do not wanna go back to where we were with the increase in Part 1 crime. Okay? So, and I wanna show you one more slide. This is very indicative of the great things that we are actually doing in the police department. So I give you a minute there to look at that. You're looking at '21, '22, '23, '24, and '25. Again, the same first, second, third, I mean, the same first and second quarter each one of those years. But what you're looking at now is you're looking at how we were as it relates to staffing. And then you're looking at the staffing, and then you're looking at how the improvement in our staffing has reduced our Part 1 crime. So I'll run you through it. In year 2021, what you see up there is the number of authorized sworn officers that we were allocated, what was 488 in that first quarter, as well as in that second quarter of 2021. The number of sworn officers available, meaning that we did not have all the sworn positions filled, we had 353. And then in the second quarter, we had 341. Then you see the number of authorized sworn personnels in training, that being individuals that's in the training phase. We cannot include them in anything really because they are, that's exactly where they are. They're on the books, but they're in training. And then you look at the bottom one there where it says, number of vacancies, 121 in the year of 2021 of the first quarter. You look at the second quarter of 2021, and you see the vacancy number of 134. But what's important again, look down at the bottom, we said the total Part 1 crimes for that year, 8,192. That's for two quarters. That's for two quarters. Let's look at '22, '23, '24, and '25, looking in those same areas that I emphasized. So then in the second quarter, 126 vacancies. But our Part 1 crimes were, for those two quarters, 6,970. Then we move over and we see that that all starts to change. In '23, that was a bad time for us. It was a bad time for us. But in the second quarter, we had 152 vacancies. That is about, that is when Chief Mathis took over, with 152 vacancies in the Columbus Police Department based on the authorized numbers that we had. And then another area, even in that same quarter, that's extremely of interest to this council, is the number of sworn officers that was available, which was only 273. That was because of different things that we did not have in place, that we now have in place as a result of the council listening to us. But then we saw a change. In 2024, you see the number of vacancies in the first quarter in '24 was 14. And then in the second quarter was 11. And then we see our Part 1 crimes, there's a reduction there as well. Because in '23, there was 7,931. But in that comparison of '24 to the first and second quarter, you see there's 7,076. So there's a reduction already. That's as a result of having more police officers out there to do the self-initiated, to be available to respond to calls, and then some of the other things that we do, which is our proactiveness. Being able to be proactive because we have more officer on the street and available to be proactive. If we do not have those officers for whatever various reasons, then we can't be proactive. And then what ends up happening? Crime starts to go up. It's a proven fact. It is a proven fact. But here is the correlation that we're making. So for 2025, this is still pending. But you can look and see that in the first quarter of 2025, we only had 12 vacancy. That's just through people leaving, coming, and going. Okay? That's nothing, that does not raise to a level of concern. Because even right now, with this, with the vacancies that we have, we have 40 individuals that is in some form of training in the department. And we have 26 individuals that is in background and recruiting, waiting to fulfill these 12 or 11 positions that you heard the chief mention earlier. So, how did we come, make this switch and start reducing our Part 1 crimes? It's through some of the strategies that we have implemented. The chief had went over to, repeated, mentioned some of those strategies, as well as the Real-Time Crime Center, as well as our Crime Analyst, putting out information, letting us know where we need to be, when we need to be there, and occasionally, sometime, who we need to be looking for. The citizens is a great part of helping us reduce crime because we use the policing model of... because we use the policing model of intelligent-led policing, which encompass community policing, as well as police tactics and strategies as well. And then also, I want to cover with you the number of individuals, because we talk about recruiting. It is very, very difficult to become a Columbus police officer. Very difficult. The last report I gave to the chief of police as the number of individuals that we rejected was right around, was a little over 500. But we have rejected 94% of the individuals that apply to be a Columbus police officer. 94%. The exact number is about 94.61. Okay? So it is very difficult, and we're not just trying to hire someone, just to hire them. And we can do that, because you have helped us be able to do that by making our, the things that we can offer to people to attract better people. Okay? So we appreciate everything that you do for us. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. We do have one, Councilor Hickey?
I'll be remiss, well, thanks first of all, Mr. Mayor. Chief Mathis, Deputy Chief Graham, and Assistant Chief Deaton. I would be remiss not to just share with you that I really truly appreciate the leadership in the department now and where you all are. As I said a few years ago, leadership is important, because at that point, the men and women of the department, when they have someone at the top that they hook up to, they don't mind following them. And when you don't have that, you have the issues that we had a few years ago. And as I shared with my colleagues here on this council, we can never afford to go back to that situation. So like Deputy Chief Graham just mentioned, coming to us, asking for the resources that you need, we need to understand here on this council that you all are our diamond in the rough. We need to polish you all, give you what you need to go out and do what you need to do. Because when we have a high police presence in the community, it have the tendency to deter crime. And that's where we are today. I remember there was a time when I got received information that we had nine officers trying to cover 26 beats. And I just want to say to the public, not only was that dangerous for that, for those officers, but it was dangerous for, for the citizens of this community. And I understand, been there before, police for over 30 years, and I know then, and understand the importance of having someone to back you up when you're in, when you're in a situation, not on a call. And when you got nine officers, and you got someone in North Columbus who's calling for help, and you got someone from South Columbus, an officer trying to cross over the city to get there and provide that backup for that officer, that's a scary time. And things happen fast. Let me say that again. Things happen fast, so it's always important that we have the adequate number of men and women out there serving and protecting our community. And I've always had the same, and I say it again to my colleagues today, we've got to take care of the people who take care of us. And it don't just fall and stands right here with public safety, with Chief Scarborough and Sheriff Conchman and Chief Mathis, but it's in our general government. We got to take care of the people that take care of us. Because I often say, if you all don't show up to work, the city falls apart. So I understand that. And as long as I'm sitting here, I will continue to advocate for you all, to show you all my gratitude and how much I appreciate what you do. Because it's important that the public know, police officers are not your enemy. Police officers, law enforcement is your friend. And as Chief Mathis has often said, together, together, we can prevent crimes and we can fight crime together. So I call on all of the citizens of Columbus. Be engaged, get involved, support our local public safety. Be with them, and just understand that some mistakes may be made along the way. But me knowing Chief Mathis, there's nothing that, that happened that we can't fix and make it right. So I just want to commend everybody that's, that's here today, and just stretch it out even further across the board to all the public safety. Chief Scarborough, you know, Sheriff Conchman, our warden. Thank y'all for what you do, man. I mean, I, I truly understand, and I appreciate y'all very much. And keep up the good work. God bless each of you and keep y'all safe. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Chambers?
Yes. First of all, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for all that you and your team do as far as keeping all of us safe. I got a quick question, and you probably already touched on it. The number of authorized sworn officers, and then there's a number of sworn officers available. What's the, how, how do you, can you explain that to me?
Yes. The number of authorized officers, that is what we actually have on the book. So that can be, this is what the city government says, we are authorized this many number of officers. That's your number of off, sworn authorized. And then off, number of officers available, that means that you're just subtracting the difference. We authorize a certain number, but that's not, we don't have what we authorize. This all that we have available to be on the street, to be involved. And so then if you look down there further, you will see, when we talk about the number that's in training, yeah, we have them on the books, but they're not available to assist in the field. They're not available to respond, answer calls, they're not available to service calls, they're not available to investigate, they're not, they're just on the book. And you saw the training video. We estimate that it takes about anywhere between nine months to a year from the time when the individual is hired to be out there in the field to be considered an officer that's available. That's why it's so important that we keep our number of officers high, so that when we have to have a training period, it doesn't hurt us with officers being available to service calls while these other officers are in training. That's why it is, is very, very important, very important.
Well, these numbers are very impressive. That speaks to leadership. The turnover rate, and I know the good thing about it is you have a waiting list of officers ready to go, but what, what's the turnover rate in, in your?
I have not calculated turnover, turnover rate recently, but I would just say conservatively, we probably averaging about two individuals leaving a month in comparison to us recruiting about eight a month. So we're still pretty good in that area. Now, one, a tricky part about turnover is sometime you have people, they just can't make it through the academy. So we factor them in and leave it. Sometime you have people because of, they're married to a military spouse, they leave. What we really look at is the individual that's leaving because there is a issue beyond their control. Them leaving and having to go with their spouse, they have no control of that. When I say issue, we're talking about an issue in the department. So we don't want it to be issues in the department that's causing people to leave. So that's why we have, pay close attention to what's going on in the department.
Thank you. And because healthy turnover is, is, is good turnover.
Right.
You know, so, but, but thank you for that. Thank you for your leadership.
Yes, sir. Counselor Shkogel?
On the, on the flip side, I thank you, thank you all for your, for your presentation. It's the decrease in crime rate is very impressive, and I know all of our districts really feel the impact of, of that with people calling us and communicating with us, and as well as just the general safety of our, of our citizens. On the flip side of recruiting and having people come in, I know that we had talked a little bit about the drop program and, and how the retirement of our officers affect the people who are coming in and vice versa. Is there, and maybe that's Chief Mathis's lane, but is that something that we can just get an update on, on drop program? Or, or the retirement of, of officers moving in and out?
Yes, ma'am. What I think you're referring to is a few months ago where I came in and talked about the ex, not the drop program itself, but the extent, the three-year extension. And Rod may be able to talk about this more, because he's actually on the pension board. But the last conversation, I think me and the mayor and the city manager had at the time, he was actually going to present it to council. And is, I, you are on the pension board?
Where we are with that right now, as it relates to the pension board, has been mentioned. And the, the best thing that I can tell you at some point in time that it should be presented to the, hopefully presented to council for consideration. And, but I will speak on the other part that you mentioned. How does this impact? Well, we have individuals that we're trying to have a stabilized succession plan. And in order to have a stabilized succession plan, we have to have definitive dates of individuals leaving the agency, so that we can train people up to train, to take individuals places, so we will not have a void in leadership. That's what it's all about. It's not having a void in leadership, it's being able to have that consistency, continuity, so the department continues to flow without any serious problems. So, an example, without calling any name, we have several individuals that we feel are ready for the next level. However, we can't even begin to train them for the next level, because we really don't know, is it going to get around to the time for them to be promoted? Because of, we do not have a true succession plan, because we cannot, a person could be in the drop and change their mind, and we can't invest time in this individual to get them up to the level to be able to progress through the department and keep the department moving forward. So at some point, it really should be coming before city council for that decision to be made to alleviate the extension. Not alleviate the drop program, alleviate the three-year susten- extension, so that we can have a bona fide succession plan.
Just to add on to that, the, the, the pause on the drop plan, I think that's, that's a relatively easy fix. The pension board is in the process of putting together a committee that will take a look at all of the different aspects of the pension plan. Because what you run into with 3,000 employees, you've got maybe a thousand really focused on one piece in the pension plan. Well, it may not be as important to another group. So the key is to focus it in on what really would, would make a significant difference and bring council the recommendations or the ideas from the, the employees, so that they can take a look at what really might impact retention, hiring, things of that nature. So that's, they're, we're working on putting that together right now.
Thank you. That's all my, that's all I had on my list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Garrett?
I just wanted to thank everybody on the force. Chief Mathis, you've done an amazing job pulling the team together, but a lot of you have been here for years. The talent was here. You just need somebody to support your mission, and we're grateful for each and every one of you. And I've seen the impact of what you're doing in the community. It's been great. It's made our streets safer, it's made our community more welcoming to new businesses, and it's a team effort, and I am grateful to each and every one of you who serve. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Incredible presentation, a lot of work and effort goes into that. A lot of people realize that, but you got to pull it all together. Incredible success story standing right before us. Chief, your staff, your command staff, the men and women of CPD, and to include there are other public safety departments, Sheriff's Department, Fire and EMS, our warden and, and his staff and people. We've got outstanding people. But understanding that you have to first build a team, which you just told us. Building a team's one thing, but then getting everybody on the same page and doing the work is another thing. And it's obvious with the statistics that we see now that, like I said, it's a success story right in front of us, and the team is doing an excellent job. They're working hard. And it's a battle, it's an ongoing battle every day. So keeping everybody heading in that direction is, is extremely important. And I just want to commend, number one, I want to show appreciation personally. I also want to speak on behalf of my constituents and others that I keep hearing all the time. They really have, they notice, they recognize, they're in support of the department. They're there, they're backing you. And I can see the difference, just meeting officers, that, you know, in the past, you get a lot of rotation over time, but a lot of new officers. And just to see the attitudes and their desire to want to serve and how they respond to the citizens and all has just been, just, just wonderful in, 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 in watching that. But again, the recognition goes to the team, command staff, and all those involved in training and doing what it takes day in and day out, because you can't let up. You guys can't let up, I know that. And I've been there in a different environment, what it takes to win, what it take, and, and it's not easy building that team and then getting everybody going in the right direction. But it's, it's refreshing, it's rewarding, and everybody should feel great about the things that's been accomplished and the direction we're going. But again, the appreciation needs to be shown to the men and women of CPD across the board. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And Chief, I'm going to ask you just a second to kind of give us your philosophy on crime prevention, because I know even though police are largely law enforcement, they, he, the chief has, has voiced a, a philosophy of how to kind of stop some of that from happening. But I mentioned, it's been mentioned around the table that it's the entire public safety department. And Chief Scarpa is back there, Warden Walker. We even, we involved our crime prevention director and our emergency management director. We, the sheriff is invited. We, we have a meeting every two weeks with all of these folks. And it sounds like it's, it would get redundant, but it actually allows them to gather together, talk about some of the challenges they're facing in their respective departments, and get on the same page. And I think that has gone a long way towards enabling us to try to keep some of these things from happening. But we do have them happen, and we can't stop them all. I mean, just like the party the, this past weekend. Stuff like that happens. If you would, give just a few minutes on what you think the public can do and how you think that plays into your philosophy of preventing crime?
Yes, sir. When I first came here to Columbus, we did not have a, a cop's unit, and that's the officers behind me now, and they do an incredible job. They're kind of our eyes and ears out on the street, Mayor. And my philosophy about policing is this, that, you know, we have to have enforcement. It's just something that we have to do, we have to enforce the laws. But I really would look like to get back to a place where we're just considered peace officers. That what we're, our goal is to go out and build relationship with the community. Any police that, any police chief comes into an organization, he tries to teach them his mission. And my mission is really, really simple. Build relationships and reduce crime. And I tell my police officers, every time I speak to them, that if they're not doing one to two things, if they're not building relationships or reducing crime, they're wasting my time. And you, you mentioned Chief Scarpa. I've learned a lot from Chief Scarpa, because you guys might not realize this about me, but I'm really high strung. And, and I like things done in a certain fashion, I don't want it done yesterday. Well, Chief Scarpa has a completely different leadership style than mine. He's very laid back, he's very calm, cool and collected. So I'm actually learning from him in the meetings that we have. Because I go high and to the right when things are not going the way they're supposed to be. And honestly, that's kind of the way I had to come into an organization, the way it was at the time. I had to come in and set the boundaries, set the standards. And you can see, I got a wonderful command staff from, from Assistant Chief Tim Fitzpatrick, Assistant Chief Lance Deaton, Graham. Every one of my command staff is operating at extremely high level, and we're all doing it together. When I first came in, I, I, I made some mistakes by saying that we had some poor leadership at the top. It wasn't poor leadership, it was fragmented leadership. A lot of my command staff were trying to just go in different directions. So I just pulled them in as a team, and they actually do the work. I'm, I'm really acting as just a cheerleader. I cheerlead the progress that they're making, and they're making a lot of progress. I know we spent a couple of minutes talking about the positive things we've done. We've done a multitude of other things besides what I told you today, all in the mission of reducing crime and building relationships. Everything that we talked about today is to accomplish those two missions. And building relationship, it could not be done without the help of the community. And building relationship, it could not be done without the help of the community. You know, I see I see Mr. Broadwater at every council meeting. That's the kind of citizens we need. We need citizens to get involved, citizens that we can count on, citizens that will call us and provide us information. Good, bad, or indifferent, we all have to work together. If we really truly want Columbus to be one of the safest cities in the state, we all going to have to work together. We're going to have to work with the street department. We're going to have to work with with um all the other departments, code enforcement. Because if we're all working together, we're all identifying these problems, and we can fix them, and we can fix them immediately, crime is going to continue to go down. And if crime goes down, you're going to have more corporations wanting to come into the city, more businesses want to come into the city, and people, CEOs and and residents wanting to move into Columbus. And I really truly think that's where Columbus is headed.
Thank you, Chief. And we we do have an opportunity to celebrate uh the the relationship we have with our public safety on the fifth of August, National Night Out. So we hope all the citizens are making plans in their communities to uh participate. We have a um uh I think Counselor Tucker, who is joining us virtually. She wanted to make a comment.
Yes. Um first of all, thank you, Mayor. Uh I think it was, trying to see what date, July 12th. We uh all got a message from a Curvin Boys, and it was in reference to the shooting on Manchester Expressway. And I'm thanking the mayor because my my request was that we have this meeting and that the chief provides uh some updates in reference to the main question that the citizen um asked, who is Curvin Boys. Is how's the city council going to be proactive to ensure that issues like this won't happen again? And and it happened again at a house party. Uh so you have citizens on one side, want to see more policing. And then you have individuals, that's one of my constituents, like Terrence Flowers, um in District Flo- Four, who feel like it's overpolicing in the the black communities. So we we as counselors have to kind of, you know, really just, I'm gonna say, y- you have to weigh those questions. And I'm happy that we have this opportunity to have this work session because it has been a lot of questions. I absolutely appreciate everything that you do. And one of the things that I mentioned to you, Chief, is that we need to dispel misinformation at all at all costs. Because a lot of times the misinformation gets way ahead and then we're kind of spinning our wheels trying to get the narrative back. So um in regards, and I appreciate Counselor Chambers asking that question, and I got several questions, sorry. And it's coming from those citizens and the reason why I asked for this um update today. And I appreciate you, Chief. And um also Graham for for providing this information today. But one of the the things that uh Counselor Chambers brought up was our numbers. And we we show over the years how the numbers have changed. And now we're not needing a whole lot of officers, and we have officers waiting to join. Uh but one of the things that I I really want you to explain, Chief, is that availability. And the reason why that available number versus authorized, why they're different, and how we changed that number from the four hundred plus to the three hundred now, and why did we do that? What was the reason for us doing that change? And how that number, that four hundred versus the three hundred number in regards to the actual officers that we have working, like working, not the training part, but working and what open positions we have, how all that plays to why we made the decision to change that authorized number? That's the first question.
Okay. Can I answer that question first? I'll do it the best I can. Uh the reason it changed from the number you saw up there is as four forty-four. If you remember, I came to council and I asked to eliminate forty-four positions for a five thousand dollar pay raise for all my police officers and all the dispatchers. And to be quite honest, that's one hundred percent of the reason that we are now full at dispatch and that we're very close to being full with police officers. Because now we can compete. I think they went up on their pay a little bit uh since then, so they're ahead of us again. But now we can compete with places like La Grange and places like Opalaka and Auburn. Uh because before, they were paying ten thousand dollars more a year for a police officer than Columbus was paying. And the police officers here in Columbus were handling twenty calls a day, so they were getting taxed. And then when you get taxed that much, you get burnt out. And then they leave us and go to these other places to be able to slow down and not take so many calls. And then plus, they get a ten thousand dollar pay raise. So with that five thousand dollar pay raise, it made us more comparable to some of these other jurisdictions. But what we have that those other jurisdictions don't have is the ability to move through the department in a multitude of different divisions. These other small departments don't have that luxury. Well, here in Columbus, we do. But when I first came here, we almost, every one of those specialized units were eliminated to put officers on the street just to handle the calls. So now we've got all those units back in full service. And so now some of these young police officers can come on board and see a career advancement program. Within a couple of years, they could be anywhere in the department that they want. And that's what motivates young people. It's not necessarily money. If uh some some of the millennials, if they get upset with you, they'll quit and leave a job for fifty fifty cents more an hour. So you have to create the environment, the atmosphere within the organization that makes it more conducive to some of these young people. So that's why it went from, I think, four forty-four to four hundred. And other than that, everything else happened before me. I just remember at one time y'all had four eighty-eight, and then somehow it got down to um no, it got down to four twenty-two, and we eliminated forty-four positions. It got me to three eighty. So then I think that's where I'm at right now, three eighty-eight. And me and the mayor's had a conversation. And over the next year, I probably will be coming for council, trying to get that number to four hundred. And the reason the number four hundred works is because of the technology advancements that we've had. We got flock cameras all over the city. We have the real-time crime center. So we're utilizing the technology available to us that'll that really eliminates the need for some police officer positions.
Okay. And I appreciate um you for for providing that information. And I think it was never fully manned for those four hundred and forty-four spots, like over, um I guess, like the history of Columbus CPD. I'm not sure, but I'm just guessing that that's the reason why, you know, you decided that the good idea with the five thousand and removing forty-four to use that to actually pay, since we had it on the books and it's on the books and we're not using that, you know, those positions, it would be better to put it in the officer's pockets. That's what it sounds like to me that, you know, the thought process in reference to that. And so we never really met that four forty-four. So really, that second line is the number that you really want to look at. And I I'm just, I'm saying in reference to me sitting here looking at the presentation, is it more accurate that we need to look at that second line of how many actually was available to work or were working when it comes to that authorized?
Yes. What he's talking about is the number that authorizes, the number the council gave us. What he's talking about is the number available is because we have about forty police officers in some form of training right now, either in the academy, in FTO, or about to go to the academy. So what he's saying is we've hired them, they're on staff, but they're not available to answer calls or to make arrests. They're not a hundred percent certified yet. So when he says the ones that are available, that's the ones that are fully functional on their own, out on the street. The ones that are not available are in some form of training. And the state kind of put us in a little bit of predicament because when I first came, we were having four academies a year. And it was for for sixteen weeks. No, for twelve weeks, four academies a year. Well, last year, they changed that to a twenty-week academy and only having two acad- two academies a year. So when I was having thirty people in each academy to get us where we're at today, now they basically have two academies a year, and they take six months for each academy. So we just had academies start on July the seventh or the third. And they're in the academy right now. I think we got twenty people. Well, the next academy doesn't start till January the seventh. So we're twelve, fourteen, fifteen officers short. We're we're, we can hire them today. They're, they've already been through the process, but they can't start the academy till January the seventh. So it's really no need to get them on payroll for four or five months for them just to kind of hang out. So we've got them ready to go. They know they're going to be hired. And probably September, October, we'll bring them on so we can train them for fo- three or four months before they start the academy. So the available numbers, the ones that are out there are ready to go to be able to answer calls today.
Okay. And I, you know, one of the things that we see in reference to, um and I'm, I know me, when I'm listening to constituents, uh one of the comments was, well, we reduced the amount of officers that that's authorized, and that's the reason why we're fully staffed. But looking at that chart, it explains it a little more in detail that even though you reduce, we never went up to that total number. And I I think that was one of the misconceptions, and it needed to be more, I'm gonna say, explaining in more detail. That way people could really understand that even though we was authorized, that four forty-four, we never reached that. So using that money was really smart to put in the officer's hands. And and what the numbers are now, we've never had these numbers before. So we've never had this amount um of officers actually working um and being fully staffed. So that's, that was one of the things. And and I'm I'm saying this because that email that we received from Ms. Curvin Boys was very detailed. And I know we get a lot of uh emails like that, but people are nervous. She felt like Columbus, you know, wasn't safe, and I had to respond and and tell her that, look, you know, I can ask Chief Mathis um to come and give a presentation to let you all know about what the proactive plan is and what we currently have implemented. And that was one of the things that, you know, I was wanting us to talk about. And I'm happy that the mayor mentioned the crime prevention. And I'm also happy that Graham mentioned the intelligence-led policing. So on one hand, we have one person, Ms. Curvin, um Boys, who's saying we need more. She wants to know more details. Like what are the initiatives that we're out addressing crime? Um she really wants to see youth intervention and reentry programs and things like that. Um and hear it, like, this is, when we're in these work sessions, this is the time for us to show the citizens exactly what our public safety is doing to ensure that they're not feeling unsafe. So and I appreciate talking about the Real-Time Crime Center and maybe, and I'm not sure if we can do this, but have, I guess, like district counselors have some of their their um constituents come through and see a tour of the Real-Time Crime Center. Just to help, you know, with some of those um misconceived notions that nothing's being done by CPD. Or nothing's being done, you know, by the sheriff, or that too much is being done. So that was one statement. But one question I have in reference to Terrence Flowers. So his his concern is he feels like the east side, especially Buena Vista Road, Floyd, Forest, all those areas are being overpoliced. And I know we're, we men- mentioned the intelligence-led policing. Can you explain how that works and and why, and I, and also add in that what CPD does and what the sheriff, MCSO, does, they're different? Like, explain how that works when we're ha- we have these operations out there and why they're seeing more officers in certain areas. And one of the main concerns is, he feels like, and a lot of other people feel like, the north side is not being policed like the, like the south and the east side.
Okay. It's a lot to unravel. Let me see if I'll go through it step by step.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. But I will make this statement that I've made to all my police officers, that I tell my police officers, every time we make contact with a citizen, we either make a deposit or we make a withdrawal in respect that that person has in law enforcement. So my goal, and we don't need to share with this with everybody, but we write three times as many warnings as we do citations. So our ca- our self-initiated calls is up twenty thousand. So about thr- two-thirds, at least two-thirds of the traffic stops that we make, people are getting warnings. I'm a huge warning advocate, simply because our our job is not to generate revenue. Our job is to change people's behavior. And a warning does that a million times more than a citation. So and I tell my police officers that, and they know that. And I put together a stat tracker so I can track every police officer's activity. So we can hold a, we can set a standard, and we can hold them accountable. When it comes to some of the special initiatives that we have, when I first came to Columbus, I had a lot of people from the underserved community and the black community on the south side of Columbus tell me they haven't seen a police officer in their area in two years. And they wanted to know how come police officers weren't working in their area and why police officers seem to stay on the north side of Columbus. It it wasn't true. They, the officers didn't stay on the north side of Columbus. We just didn't have enough, we didn't have as many police officers. So I came up with the initiative to have Rod Graham use intelligence-led policing to s- to to put hotspots on where the crime is being committed. And you'd think, okay, if the crime, if you know exactly when the crime's being committed, you know exactly what day, what month, what minute the crime is most probable uh gonna happen, why wouldn't you put a police officer right there? And that's what we do. We use intelligence-led policing. Just so happens, some of these really, really uh red spots or these hotspots are in the south side of Columbus. So we put police officers right there in that area. And I promise you, the law-abiding citizens in that area are calling me now going, thank you, Chief. I finally see police officers in my community. If they think that's overpolicing of us making traffic stops on people and writing warnings to try to get that visibility out there so the citizens that are tired of feeling like they're a prisoner in their own home, they're calling me, telling me, thank you. So I'm not exactly sure who you're referring to, uh but I promise you, we're not overpolicing. I'm getting less complaints against police officers. We're getting less use-of-force uh reports on police officers than I did when I first started. So clearly, these police officers that we're hiring have learned the art of de-escalation and verbal communication. And and it's working.
Yeah. And and I I want to say, you know, there's one person and his followers, and I just want to make sure everybody is heard, you know, from Ms. Curvin, who is asking for more. She's wanting to see more. She's wanting to hear initiatives. And you just mentioned, you know, the initiatives. I know them. Um and and I'm a big public safety safety advocate, and I appreciate what you all do all the time. And I'm, you're like one call, that's all. But it's individuals who need to hear this in this format. Um that way we can really clear up the miss, you know, information. And I think you just did that by providing, you know, the information in reference to what you all do. And I will say this, I can, I can attest to my neighborhood watch groups, um who I'm actively involved in. They are extremely thankful for you being out there, especially, you know, the ones at Moore Estates, um Forest, um Park, and Holiday Park. They love getting when Graham comes and he gives those numbers. And um also, when you come, Chief, they, you know how they are when you, when you pop in. I mean, you like on a Schwarzenegger or some, a celebrity when you come. But they are extremely thankful. And that's the thing. We have two different wide extremes. You know, you have some that's saying they're overpolice, and then some that's like screaming, we need help. And especially those elderly people that we have within our community. But again, I just wanted to thank you first and foremost. Um this is something I asked for. You didn't hesitate. I made sure I said the date. It was just two, three weeks ago. And here you are are today, providing the presentation. And I just got to thank you and your staff. And I just got to thank you and your staff, and I definitely have to thank the mayor for actually putting it on the agenda. So, um, thank you, chief. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, man. Uh, Mayor, can I just add a couple more things?
Yes, sir, please.
A lot of these initiatives that we're implementing, um, like we did the, uh, the thirty days of Initiative Rightland School got out. Uh, clearly that worked. Um, the problem, and I had a lot of people call me going, chief, why don't you extend this initiative all summer? Well, during that thirty days, I eliminated all vacation and all training. So I can't necessarily do that all summer to my police officers. So I have to pick and choose, and we probably will do another initiative like that, probably in November, when, as the other times, uh, crime usually spikes. Um, but besides the initiatives to reduce crime and prevent crime, I would like you to hear from Assistant Chief, uh, Deaton in reference to how fast we're solving some of these crimes and the percentage of us solving, um, the, the, some of the most heinous crimes, the murders. And remember earlier, I mentioned, one's too many. One's too many. And I would like it to get zero homicides or murders. But if we have one, we want it solved very quickly and we want the, the bad guys, um, to be put in jail. And so Lance, if you'd just come up and give them a real quick brief of some of our percentages.
Thank y'all for having us today. I, I certainly will be brief. Um, y'all have heard me say this before. I, I, I made mention of this last year when we did a presentation about our clearance rates and how we were above the national average in every single part-one crime category, and that remains true today, um, even a year later. So here's kind of the breakdown, um, and I, I've got a breakdown from twenty-one through twenty-five, the first two quarters of each year. Uh, murder clearance rate in twenty-one, sixty point six one percent, and twenty-two, seventy-one percent, twenty-three, fifty percent, twenty-four, seventy-seven point seven eight percent. And year-to-date, uh, for the first two quarters, uh, for twenty-five, eighty-seven point five percent. That's huge. Um, what's not said in that number is if you look at what it is year-to-date, um, all of the murders that we've had in twenty twenty-five, every single one of those are cleared except for one. And that one's close. And we'll get that one before the, you know, before too terribly long. Um, I'm pretty confident in that. On top of ninety-eight percent clearance rate for this year so far on murders, uh, they've also cleared several previous murders from twenty-four, from twenty-three. Y'all have seen some press releases from the young man, um, from Manchester that was murdered here on, on prom night, uh, back a couple of years ago. Um, that has now been cleared as well this year. So they're making big strides in our clearance rates. Um, but eighty-seven point five percent, seventy-seven percent last year, eighty-seven point five percent this year in the first two quarters is huge. Uh, robbery, twenty-one, twenty-seven percent, twenty-two, twenty-nine percent, twenty-three, twenty-seven percent, twenty-four, thirty-eight point eight three percent, twenty-five, fifty-eight point zero six percent. So again, you're seeing those numbers increase. Our clearance rates are increasing every single year. Aggravated assault, twenty-one, fifteen point eight five, twenty-two, twenty-one point six, twenty-three, fifteen point five, twenty-four, forty-three point seven five, twenty-five, fifty-four point zero five percent. Again, that's a huge, uh, increase, moving from twenty-one at fifteen percent to twenty-five at fifty-four percent. Uh, super proud of these guys, uh, men and women that are, uh, working these cases and making these strides. Uh, burglary, fourteen point six, eleven percent, nine percent, and twenty-four, twenty-eight percent, and twenty-five, twenty-nine percent. Uh, without going through the rest of these, there, every single category is, uh, is showing an increase, a substantial increase. But here are the bottom-line numbers for all part-one crimes. Twenty twenty-one, first and second quarter, part-one crime clearance rates, twenty-one point seven eight, and twenty-two, thirty-two percent, and twenty-three, twenty-one percent, and twenty-four, fifty-seven percent, and twenty-five, fifty-four percent. Yeah, you're, you know, up through the first two quarters. So again, you're seeing an increase from twenty-one percent to fifty-seven, fifty-four percent. Again, significant jump, uh, in our clearance rates. And when you talk about, how does that really correlate to our part-one crimes and the reduction of crime? Well, think about this. If we are clearing cases and we're getting bad guys off the street, those are crime, when they're, when they're locked up, those are, they're, they can't commit any more crimes because we have them on lockdown, right? And that's how that correlates. And so the faster, to the chief's point, the faster we get cases cleared, the less crimes these people are going to commit. Because we know in most cases, people who are breaking into cars, they're not breaking into just one car. They're hitting us for twenty-five cars a night. They're hitting us for fifty cars at a time. Those kind of numbers drive, that's what drives our part-one crime numbers up. So when we get these folks locked down, that reduces our numbers overall very quickly. Uh, Council Hickey will, will know this. In our day as investigators, you know, we would, it would take months sometimes to get cases cleared. Uh, these guys were clearing cases, guys and girls are clearing cases, sometimes in a matter of hours uh, versus, uh, months and sometimes years. And that, that's a testament to a few things. One is the technology. The technology is so much better. Um, and that has allowed us to move through the process very quickly. And when I talk about technology, I don't, I'm not meaning just cameras. Cameras are a big part. But we have a complete unit that does, uh, nothing but do our, um, forensic analysis on cellphones and computers and those kind of things. Every single case we work today has a cellphone. Every single case we have today has either a cellphone or a computer. So those type of units are huge. Uh, we have analysts, gang analysts, that are watching things and keeping track of information that helps us assess manpower, helps us run these specialized details, so we know where to put people. So sometimes we'll take our investigators and we'll run a detail. If we see burglaries are going up, we'll run details. But we know right where we're getting hit, and that's where we assess that manpower. And so that goes right back into the intelligence-led policing and how we use that to drive these numbers. So I do think it's very important to make that correlation between clearance rates and our part-one crimes. I'm super proud of these men and women, uh, and the work that they are doing and continue to do. Um, I will, I will close with this. Just yesterday, uh, we had a homicide. We didn't have it yesterday, but we had a previous homicide on Beacon Avenue. Uh, we had, uh, four warrants issued on individuals that were involved in that warrant, and all four of those individuals were picked up, arrested yesterday on outstanding felony, uh, felony murder and aggravated assault warrants. So that's the kind of work that continues to be done in this city, um, by our officers. Uh, and, uh, and again, we continue to, uh, to be appreciative of the work that they're doing. Um, that's not us. That's the, that's them out doing the work, boots on the ground. Uh, our job is to, to try to provide them resources, uh, to make their job easier. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, chief. Uh, Councilor Garrett?
Chief, if you could, since y'all talked about cameras, could you just let everybody know what the, uh, the session on Friday is about? I think it's like a speed camera or something.
Yeah, so that's, that's the Red Speed, um, uh, school camera. And it's just an information session as school is starting to, uh, to pick back up. So people understand what the rules are, how they work, where they're at, those kind of things. So we're trying to be very proactive in getting information out. Um, some of you may remember, um, Crow Wolf, when we did, rolled out Crow Wolf, we did not do a good job of rolling Crow Wolf out, and it caused all of us a lot of headache. So we have done a much better job. We learned some lessons in that rollout. And we've done a much better job of rolling out information. And this is just another way for us to roll this information out, to make sure people understand that school's about to start and the cameras that have been running for the, the summer have been summer school, schools. These are now going to be twenty schools that are up and running. And by the end of, uh, the school year, they will drastically, you know, they will incrementally increase over the course of year to, to up to forty, I think. So, but that's what it's about. That's a good question. It's Friday at Shirley B., I think. Is it Sher- at Shirley B. Winston? Rod, do you know? I'll have to get it to you, but I'll make sure I get it to you.
All right, uh, Councilor Hickey.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, Chief Deaton, I just want to thank you publicly, uh, and, well, I want to thank you for all that you do and congratulate you on your most recent, uh, promotion.
Thank you, sir.
And I know you're going to do a great job, so we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, gentlemen, I think that's all the questions. I just, I want to, hold it. Councilor Davis?
Yeah, while, while we're, uh, discussing public safety, I just want to jump over to another matter that's on my to-do list. I've been thinking about for a while and still trying to piece it together. And so I'm going to take this opportunity to ask some questions. But our public safety is extremely important. It, it, it's extremely important that we get them the tools that they need in a timely manner, in a very efficient, effective way. And the question would be, is there a possibility that we can save the citizens a lot of money and that we can expedite the process to get our officers, whether in the sheriff's office or CPD or fire and EMS, across the board? That we can get them the tools that they need, the resources they need in a much timelier manner. I, look, I, I know we've had process as far as procurement for years, for, for, for years now. And, you know, all the police chiefs that I've talked to over, over time, uh, sheriffs, uh, fire and EMS chiefs, they've all talked about this matter one way or another, okay? So, you know, the question would be, Mr. City Attorney, is, is it, does the council have the ability to adjust procurement processes where if needs are there and the heads of these departments and offices, if they are recognizing that they've got an opportunity to save our city a lot of money and still meet that need, is there an opportunity where through the procurement process that we could give more of the decision-making to the department or the office heads? And of course, it would have to go through, you know, you would have to get some check calls from finance and all. But to bypass, basically to bypass a standard procurement process and be able to make a purchase, whether they get a five thousand, ten thousand dollar discount right then and there versus going through a procurement, then you're going to pay a, you know, a probably most, most likely a more costly, uh, it would be a more costly approach to doing that. And if they reckon, they've been doing this for a long time, if they recognize that they can do that and they need to deal with an issue right then and there, is it possible that we could give more authority to the department heads or the office heads to make these decisions?
It's possible. Um, Ms. Goodwin may want to add on, but you can always do an amendment, give them some more flexibility. But you need to have a limit on how high they can go on a contract amount, whether it's through a cooperative of the state or some other entity. You gotta have a cap, so.
Okay.
Does anybody want to comment on that from the finance side or the executive management side?
Deputy City Manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I, I'm going to call on, um, Finance Director Angelica Alexander to respond to that. But I think that is definitely something that we want to tread lightly on, um, because of, uh, any, some potential issues that could arise, but.
Uh, good, uh, morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, Mr. City Attorney, Deputy City Manager Goodwin. Um, as Deputy City Manager mentioned, um, and as the City Attorney mentioned, obviously council does have flexibility in terms of the amount, um, before we go out and, um, procure, uh, certain items. Um, there are some state requirements, um, in terms of free and open competition. And there are some state requirements in terms of certain, um, contracts being above certain dollar amounts where procurement is required. It's a state law. It's not council discretion in terms of, um, what that amount would be. Uh, but council did re-increase the, um, purchasing limits, uh, last September. Um, initially, the, um, city manager's authority went up to twenty-five thousand. Um, now, uh, with the change that the council approved in September of twenty-four, it goes up to fifty thousand. Um, there are, um, certain, uh, levels of even, uh, up to the fifty thousand before it comes to council that still require some additional approvals. Uh, but that is also sort of handled internally between the department or elected office, the finance department under the city manager's authority before it comes to the council. So right now, the council limit is the fifty thousand.
So what I'm hearing you saying, we can't adjust that number in situations, as long as it's in the budget. If it's budgeted, let's just say, for example, they need cars or they need to outfit cars or they need to do something right away and they're getting an opportunity. They don't have to go through a state contractor that might be five, ten thousand dollars more. They could get one off a local lot to meet a need, whatever it might be, for far less money, support the local economy. But what we're doing at fifty, fifty thousand won't even be enough to, to purchase one vehicle. So, uh, you know, we've had, we approve a lot of stuff through the budget process and then it's six months, nine months, towards the end of the year before it even gets taken care of. But my point is, I, you know, as you heard today in this conversation, is the ability to provide those resources and those tools in a very quick, effective way. And if we're, we've got those opportunities as a city and we can save the taxpayers and support our public safety at the same time, is it right that we look at making some of those changes from a positive standpoint? But at the same time, it can still be financially monitored and, and making sure that the, uh, financial means, the resources, the, the stuff that it takes, you know, to get it done. And if that's possible, uh, giving more latitude and flexibility there. And I think what I hear is that City Attorney says you can. Uh, but I would like to see from the finance department if there's a list.
I would like to bring some recommendations, right?
That if there's certain items you can or can't, I would like to know what that is. That's, like I said, this is on my to-do list and I'm kind of processing it. So this is an opportunity. I just took a chance while we're on the subject to talk about these things. And I don't know, maybe, chief, you might want to comment on this as well. Maybe the fire chief might want to come on, comment on it.
In the meantime.
We got Chief Scarpere here as well, but.
In the meantime, we are, they're doing that now. They've got the ability. Still, we're doing with the vehicles. We're still, we're not pulling them off the lot.
Not that ended, um, June thirtieth.
We could, that, that'd be easy enough to reinstitute.
We could reinstitute that.
Yeah, because we have done, we've done that in the past where we've, we've allowed them. And we make, uh, we authorize emergency purchases.
That's true, too.
Particularly at some of the, at the jail and at the, at the prison, so we.
Well, and those are good things they pass through every once in a while. But I, I really would like the, the police chief and the fire chief to, to comment on it. You understand the subject and what I'm talking about. And if there's some relevance that you can add here, I'd really like to hear that. I think my colleagues would like to hear that as well. I've heard various, my colleagues, uh, speak about it, but we've never really, like I said, it's on a to-do list and we're looking at it.
Well, before we move on to the, uh, police chief and the fire chief, I would like to just make a couple of comments. And so I think it's a great idea in terms of, um, your recommendation, which is allowing the finance department to come back with some, um, options. Because in addition to the, um, state requirements, we also want to make sure that we're meeting federal requirements. We do have a lot of grants that we get from the federal government. Uh, we do have to make sure that they also follow the procurement, um, process. So I will bring that back to you as, um, you recommend it and request it. Um, also, I, uh, just want to make reference to, uh, what the mayor was referring to in terms of the off-the-lot purchases. Um, council for the last three years have approved, has approved a resolution allowing for off-the-lot purchases, um, due to exigent, exigent circumstances because of supply chain issues and so on. I would like to somehow figure out if we could make that some sort of permanent, uh, more permanent recommendation in terms of, um, what we do from a procurement standpoint, even if that is simply adjusting the, um, amounts as you, uh, mentioned. So, um, I'd be happy to bring some information back in terms of some recommendations as far as the purchasing limits and possible changes to the procurement ordinance to, um, facilitate some of these purchases, but I'll turn it over.
Sure, and I think, you know, the vision, like you said, I think it's, it's going to require, uh, everybody working together and going through that. But, uh, I do really believe that there's a more efficient, effective way to support our public safety, and this may be an opportunity.
Uh, good morning, uh, Mayor, members of council. I'm the City Attorney.
I'm the City Attorney, Deputy City Manager. Appreciate the question, council member. It's, we have recognized a significant benefit in our department from the changes the finance department made last year associated with increasing the funds allowed per purchase via credit card and increasing the amounts. That has really streamlined some of our processes, allowed us to do things a little bit quicker. I think currently for us, probably our biggest challenge is typically associated with with RFPs. When we do those, they're, they're very lengthy, they take time, and they're appropriately, they do, because they're typically high dollar amounts. For example, we are right now engaged in an effort to outsource our, or rebid our our contract for annual physicals for our department. Unfortunately, because of the length of the process this is taking, it's gonna put us in a little bit of a bind when it comes to getting our physicals done. So if there's any way that we could look at that process, I I don't pretend to be an expert in that, that's not my area of expertise. We rely exclusively on our our finance partner partners. So, I will say that if we, if we do look at changes in this area, it would certainly benefit us. We would, we would be cognizant of making sure that, we wanna be cognizant of making sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of our, in the best interest of the city. So I'll, I'll answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, already.
Counselor Davis, I appreciate you asking that question because that has been a problem in the past, but the finance department did make some changes a few months ago that's helped tremendously. The, the fire chief mentioned RFP program. I mean, it took us a year to buy a K-9. That are, I mean, of course, this is government and it already moves slow, but our RFP pro- program moves extremely slow. So if there were any way we can expedite some of that, that would be, that would be tremendous. But the changes that they made is helping tremendously, so I appreciate you bringing that up.
Counselor Davis?
The City Attorney, uh, uh, you know, you've heard the conversation today. I'm gonna be getting in touch with you and discuss a little bit more, so just, you can look into it a little bit more, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Chief, thank you.
Mayor, just wanna remind everybody that we, we put all of our stats and data on our website and our, on our webpage, and then also on our Facebook. So if they go to our Facebook page, they can see a lot of the current data there.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, if you'll allow me. One of the changes that happened, as the chiefs mentioned, was the increase in the purchasing card limit. We will be coming to council at the next meeting requesting us to submit a request to the bank to go up slightly in our allowable balance for the purchasing card, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you, Chief Mathis and his entire team for that update. Next, we have Ryan Pruitt, who's gonna come and provide an update on the fire station sploß. Thank you, Ryan.
Yes, good morning, Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Attorney, Ms. Deputy City Manager. Have a quick update. This is kind of a public safety focused work session, wanted to talk about the fire station projects. We currently have underway, we've been working, of course, with Chief Scarpa, Deputy Chief Hord from the Columbus Fire Department on these projects. So, in the sploß that was approved in 2021, there were four fire station projects. There was a brand new station, Station Five at 6,600 Lynch Road. The budget for that was $5 million. It's currently under construction. If you've been down Lynch Road, you've probably seen it. Estimated completion will be early next year. And then there were also three renovation projects. Each of these had a $3.5 million budget. Station Eight, which is on Whitesville Road, Station Four, which is on North Oakley Drive, right off St. Mary's, and then Station Six, which is on Brown Avenue. So like I said, each of them had a three and a half million dollar budget. Four and Eight, we have completed a concept design, and we do intend at the next council meeting on the purchasing agenda to bring back a contract amendment to allow the design team to move forward with the full design for those station renovations. So I have a few progress photos here of Station Five. You can see the bays there on the left, the support spaces and the living quarters there on the right. This is the rear of the building, and then a shot of the inside. So they've made great progress with the framing, really hoping to get dried in here pretty soon, get the roof on, get the exterior skinned on, that way we can move forward with the drywall. So we did wanna talk about Four and Eight because we do have a concern with those projects, been working with the fire department and the design and construction teams on these. So as I mentioned, conceptual designs have been finished for Four and Eight. Kind of the schedule of how all these will unfold, unfold is the next project will be Station Eight, but we have to wait due to operational concerns with the fire department until Station Five is finished. And Chief Scarpa, Chief Hord will be able to answer all those types of questions, but and then once Station Eight renovation is finished, we would move to Four. Once Four is done, we would move to Six. These are just some concept images that have been developed for Four and Eight. As you can see, you know, the original station is basically the three bays and then that building, the little building to the right. Both of these were built in the 1970s, so of course, they did not really include enough room as we need in modern fire stations. They really don't have enough room, you know, for proper storage and cleaning of equipment, you know, proper support spaces, and certainly, they do not include enough living spaces now that both males and females serve in fire and EMS. So, the concept designs we did move forward with include all those components that the fire department has identified as needing in the stations, you know, to make modern, long lasting fire stations. We certainly don't wanna build something that they're only gonna be able to use 10, 15 years, you know, we want 50, 75 year buildings at these locations. So with all those components, the preliminary estimates for Stations Four and Eight are currently over the three and a half million budget. We've been working, going through VE processes, and we will continue that process, you know, to get the budget and the construction costs down as low as we can, but at this point, we do feel like there is a budget issue hitting that three and a half million dollar budget. So the recommendations from the fire department would be to utilize some of that Station Six funding to cover the overage at Four and Eight. And if that is the way we move forward, you know, additional funding for Station Six could be identified. You know, there's a few options we've talked about, you know, of course, there could be an OLOS or general fund supplement in the future fiscal year, which honestly, we're looking at construction of Station Six probably in 2028, so this may be an FY29 discussion. Or there may be interest proceeds on sploß funds. So those, if, you know, and again, if additional funding is not available, you know, talk to the fire department, we would just identify a smaller scope of work at Station Six. And so, again, we intend to bring back, as I mentioned at the next meeting, contract amendments with the architect to proceed with the full concept design, which includes all these components, which we do feel will be a little bit of over budget. And so that's kind of the schedule and the intent. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Chambers?
Yeah, so is the overage due to construction materials caused?
That's certainly part of it. Of course, the the sploß budgets were developed, you know, in 2020, 2021. Obviously, in the last four years, we have seen higher escalation than we certainly would have anticipated at that time, as well as, once you get into the different topography of the sites, you know, we've acquired property adjacent to both Four and Eight. And then again, just with some of the additional square footage that has been identified that they need to create all the spaces they need, that's kind of the, the main reason for the overage.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ryan. You go.
Thank you all for that.
Counsel, wait, wait, I'm sorry, Counselor Davis has a question.
Director Pruitt, and this may be somebody in the executive administration wanna, they might wanna answer this, but I just, something you just touched on about changes, and we know that a lot of times, it takes time to, to, to work through construction, but I guess I'd ask the question, are we providing or are we inserting in the right place an adequate reserve that will cover exactly that to all of our projects? Are, are we currently doing that, that, you know, I know we put a reserve in there, I think, but is it adequate enough to cover changes through the years, whether it's material cost inflation or anything like that, that might be subject to change? And we know it could be subject to change. If it doesn't, then it's great, but if it does, you're covered.
Yeah, so anytime the city develops, or we develop, you know, a sploß package, or I know DOT will do it for a T-sploß, they do include funding for, or a number four escalation. You know, we know that these, the tax was passed in 2021, began collections in 2022. Except for Station Six, we're not gonna start renovations till 2028, so obviously, there's a gap. You know, typically, that would be three to four percent a year that we would carry for escalation to cover that. And as contractors are developing, even on these concept budgets, they include, of course, they have a pretty hefty contingency, cuz we are only at a concept level, and then we do include escalation. So if we're doing a concept budget today, but the actual construction's not gonna start for two years, you know, we would carry about three to four percent a year to try to cover that escalation as we move forward.
Yeah, and I use the word reserve, it's probably better to say a contingency, but a contingency to that exact matter that you just stated. And then, is that number enough? So when we make requests to the citizens of future, we can, you know, we've had other projects that have gone way over, and some of them very questionable, but, you know, I, I think that might be a good practice from the standpoint of management to maybe increase those numbers. I don't know what, of course, we're not, you're not, the government's not in the private sector, and reserves are used for contingencies for different matters, but in this case, that might be, that might be a good thing with where we're, with where we're going.
Yes, sir, I agree, and it's, you know, something that we look at, and, you know, we work with our industry partners to forecast, you know, what the contractors are seeing, you know, but like you said, it is, can be volatile, you know, we never know what's gonna happen in the, the, in the world, so of course, we try to use, you know, the best educated guess we can, but it is something, I think, you know, I know there's been some tight challenges with sploß projects, certainly, as well as T-sploß, so it is something we need to continue to evaluate.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Okay, thank you for that. Our final update is going to be of the continuation discussion on the proposed camping on public property discussion. I'm going to ask Jerel Short to come, and she's going to start the discussion with the presentation. I do know that Neil Richardson was here, but it looks like he may have left, and then, of course, members of the police department are here as well, and Pat Frey is on Teams as well, and to be a part of the discussion, and then Terrica Barnes also, I believe, may be here. Okay, Jerel?
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity, Deputy City Manager, just to come and show everyone exactly what it is that Public Works has to do when we're tasked with cleaning up one of these homeless camps. So when we get to a site, once we're notified of a site, the first thing we have to determine is the resources that we're gonna need to clean it up. Those resources are based on what we size the camp as, either small, medium, or large. If we're doing it as a medium to large homeless camps, we will have to use a supervisor, a correctional officer, eight inmates, front end loaders, grab ball trucks, and we normally use those by incorporating our community service team, our forestry, and our waste collection team. We also have to use flatbed trucks and dump trucks, and when we're using those, we also incorporate the street department, so it takes a lot of resources to clean. Small homeless camps, not so much, we just use our community service team, which is comprised of one supervisor, one crew leader, the community service probationers that are assigned to us by the courts, and a flatbed truck, of course, and if we have to use a loader, then we do use a front end loader. I wanted to show you pictures of different sites that we have actually taken care of this year. The first site I'm gonna show you is I-85, southbound under the Veterans Parkway Bridge. I think you all remember all the calls we were getting regarding that. There were individuals that were actually living under the, the eaves of the bridge there, and that's just the amount of waste we got from that area where they were actually living. This is Manchester Expressway, westbound at Miller Road, exit ramp, I think you all remember that one. This is what we would consider a very large homeless camp. And understand, you see all the trees, it's not an area where we can just drive in with heavy equipment, scoop it all up and take it away. We have to haul all of that debris from that location, because we don't wanna tear down trees, to a staging area where we pile it all up, and then we bring in the heavy equipment to dispose of it. That's an after picture of that same site. This is what we consider a small, and I think you'll remember this as well, Milgen Road at Midland Falls Apartment, this was a small one. That's all the debris we got out of that, but we were also able to catch it before other homeless people moved into the same site, because they just build communities, if you're not familiar with it. This is another one on Milgen Road. I think you all remember that one, that was another one that we considered to be a very large site. It's a lot of debris in that location. This is the after picture after we cleaned it up. Riverwalk is one of our active areas that we always get calls about homeless sites there. This is at the Pole 76. This is also considered a large site. We had to bring it all out to the staging area, and that was all the waste we got out of it. I want you to see that it's not just a couple of bags, it's not a, a, a sleeping bag, they are building areas where they can survive. I mean, where they do their laundry, where they have a kitchen, where they build little fires, whatever they need, it's what they're creating at these sites. We've gotten reclining chairs out of these sites, so they're going around town, picking up stuff, bringing it back to the site, and they're building homes. That's the after picture of the, of Homeless Site 78, and this is the debris that we got out of Homeless Site 78. So it's a lot, takes a lot of resources, takes a lot of manpower, takes us some time to get it taken care of. So what is our process? First and foremost, once we're notified of one, and I just saw one again last night that I reported to my team this morning, we have to go and we confirm whether or not, one, if it's on private property, if it's on state property, if it's on city property, and if it's occupied or not. Once we determine that it's, if we determine that it's on private property, we will turn it over to special enforcement. If we determine that it's on state property, then we have to obtain state permissions to clean their property. We can't just go in and clean it up, we have to let them know. State works really well with us in regards to that. Of course, if they're not having to pay for it or contract it out, they'll give us those permissions, I'm sure, but if they have to contract it out, it could take up to four weeks or longer for them to get someone out there to, to get it cleaned up. If it is an occupied site, then of course, we notify Home for Good, that's Pat Frey and her team, as well as CPD, that we do have an active occupied site at that location. Once we're notified from home, once we're notified by Home for Good that they have gone to the site and have established a vacancy date, that means that's the date that these individuals have been told that they have to leave that site, then we will go in the day after that date and get, clear out all the debris. So they go in, they provide the services, whether or not the individual obtains the service or not, it's not something that I'm, I have to consider myself with. I have to make sure that that site is vacant when our people go in. Why? Because we have been accosted by individuals that are living in these sites, and of course, we can't do what we do without CPD going in there and accompanying us at times to make sure that that site is still vacant, so that we're don't, we don't have any of our people in any form of harm's way when we're in there to clean that site. We assess the site, once we determine for sure that it's unoccupied, and then we determine what cleaning resources we need in order to clean up the area. We do do a lot of coordination within the department. We've gotten so many that we've had to start rotating so that these departments aren't taken from their daily task to be able to clean these different locations periodically. Just to give you an idea of what we've been doing, in 2023, we had a total of 29 camps identified. 24 were cleaned by our community service section, five were cleaned by coordination within Public Works. In 2024, we had a total of 18 camps identified, nine were cleaned by, again, our community service section, eight were cleaned by G, GDOT or DOT, and one was cleaned by Public Works, various Public Works Division coordination. This year alone, we've already identified 15 camps, so we're in, in line to surpass what we've done in the past. 12 were cleaned by coordination within Public Works, and three were cleaned by community service. I understand whenever I say coordination with Public Works, that's a pretty good size camp, and it takes more than one. and it takes more than one division within Public Works to go in there and get it cleaned out.
And Community Services is within Public Works as well.
Community Services is also within Public Works. So to give you an idea of the amount of waste that we're getting out of these locations, I wanted to give you something to compare it to. So comparing the amount of waste collected to what a garbage truck can hold, one garbage truck can collect up to 800 houses before having to go to the landfill and dump it. So 12 compacted tons of waste can be held in one garbage truck before it has to dump. So in 2023, we, we collected 81,000 pounds of waste, or 40.5 tons, which is equal to 3.3 garbage trucks. It's a lot of waste. In 2024, 11,000 pounds of waste, or 5.5 tons of waste, which is equal to one garbage truck of waste. This year alone, we've already collected 59,740 pounds of waste. That equals a 29.87 tons of garbage, which is 2.5 garbage truck loads of waste we've pulled out of these sites. So what are we going to do? We're going to do whatever you ask us to do, as well as we're going to continue to work with all of our partners, because they are awesome. Home for Goods goes in, and they handle the, the human aspect of it. Public Safety makes sure that we are able to go in there and get it cleaned, making sure our people are safe. We will continue to do that. I want you to also understand that when we get rid of one, two to three more will pop up somewhere else in town. I just saw one. I'm not going to say where it is, because I want to make sure we can go in there and get it cleaned out. But it's a normal location that we often get calls about. So it's a very popular location that they like to build a home with, and it, it can be seen from the street. But I wanted to just have, take the time to come and say to you all, this is what we're having to contend with. It's not just picking up a little bit of paper. It's a lot of debris that's coming out of these sites. And whatever you can do to give Public Safety the teeth and give Home for Goods the ability to, to help these people so that we don't have as many here in Columbus, will be most appreciated. Also did want to also bring up the fact that we are working with GDOT to come up with an MOU that will allow us to just go into state property without having to go through the notification process and clean up these homeless camps. That's all I have.
Okay, and of course, with GDOT, you know, it takes some time, a few weeks, for us to actually get that approval for us to be able to go in or for them to get to it. And so we're looking to have this MOU that will streamline it. And hopefully, they will just allow us, right on the spot, to be able to go and get this done without a whole lot of wait. So thank you for that, Drell. And this is, again, wanted to start the discussion with knowing exactly what the process is.
Might, might be helpful to hear from Pat, and then hear from the police, too, of what each of those different agencies does in, in reaction to a call that comes in.
Sure.
Pat, are you on?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
You can.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you all for being here, and thank you for allowing me to join virtually. And as you said, my, my colleague, Terica Barnes, is there in person as well. And, and Drell pretty much laid out the process that we've been following. If you remember, last July 30th, we came before you and talked about this process. It's a seven-day process to the camp closure per se. And I said, Drell laid it out. Terica is there and can speak about how she and the team, the outreach team, coordinate with Sergeant Katina Williams and her team to, to go through the process of the closure and communicate with Public Works along the way and the steps. Terica?
Good morning. My name is Terica Barnes. I am the community committee, excuse me, can you hear me?
The mic, pull it down, okay.
I'm the Director of Community Case Management with Home for Good with United Way. And as Pat stated, I am here to explain the process for encampment closures. As Ms. Short stated, we'll get a notification from Public Works or vice versa. The first step is to make sure that the camp is verified. The team will actually go out there to make sure that it is occupied, and my team will actually go in there and offer services. Now, it's not a guarantee that those clients are going to accept those services. But at the same time, we'll still go back day after day until the seven days are up. During that time, after the camp is verified, we will get in contact with Sergeant Williams with CPD, and we will schedule a date for CPD, CPD and my team to go into the camp to advise them that, hey, this is public property, and you have seven days to vacate the process. At that point, we'll put up a sign stating you have until this date to vacate. On the eighth day, we, my team, excuse me now, my team and CPD will actually go back out there. During that time, my team will actually get in contact with 211, and that is the gateway for all services. If the client says that they do want services, such as emergency, emergency, emergency shelter, or just permanent housing period. Again, during the seven-day time period, my team will go back out there, make sure that they still do not want services, or if anybody else new has come, come to the camp, encampment, and they do want services. And then on the seventh day, that afternoon, the team will remind, hey, you, you know, your seven days are up tomorrow. Well, today, CPD will come, and we, my team and CPD will come to let them know that at this point, you have to leave the premises. CPD, they do, they do their thing as far as any criminal activity or anything like that. But they will migrate. We will see them again. At the first time, they will not, they may not want services. Second, third, or fourth time, they may not want services. But we will still try to continue to get, stay in contact with them to see if they want to receive services.
Counselor Chambers?
So can you explain, when you go out there, what are the services that, that, that you offer? I know emergency shelter, and what, I mean, what are some of the other services?
Yes, so emergency, emergency shelter or permanent housing, which is through our Rappery Housing Program and mental health services.
Can you slow down a little bit?
I'm sorry, I do apologize. So we offer emergency shelter through Safe House Ministries or Valley Rescue Mission, permanent housing through our Rappery Housing Program, and mental health services through our PATH program, and also housing through our PATH program also. And also just wraparound services as far as the medical, food stamps, clothing, everything that a person would actually need to survive day by day.
And if they deny the services, then you turn it over to law enforcement? Or how does that work? You give them seven days, or can you say something about seven days?
Yes, so the whole process is seven days. And so after that seven day, we'll go, go back out there and let them know, hey, you have, this is the eighth day, and then CPD will take care of as far as any criminal activity. We don't turn anybody into law enforcement. That's not what we're there for. We're there to offer services, wraparound services.
So if an individual say, okay, I, I need services, do they have a place to go immediately for shelter, or how does that work?
I cannot say immediately for shelter, but what I can say is that the team will call Jamie Lee, who's over at the shelters at Safe House, or Daryl Pointer, who's over at the Valley Rescue Mission, the men's shelter, or Brandy Nix over at Domestic Sway. They, she can't, they can make a phone call right then to see if there's any availability, availability.
So if there is no availability, what happens?
Yes, so if there isn't any availability, that is a great question. It's up in the air. We, we would do our best to try to get in contact with other partners that have housing through churches. Or we'll actually have, see if we can get in contact with someone who could pay for a hotel room for that night, or and see what we can do as far as that. But we try not to let them just stay out there. But I mean, it's very difficult due to lack of resources within the community.
So if you're unsuccessful, and no one is able to help provide shelter, what happens?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So if you're unsuccessful, no one can provide this individual shelter, what happens?
Well, the next thing we'll actually do is see where they came from. We do have an influx of individuals who will be embusped here from out of state. And sometimes, some other cities, departments will actually bring, bring them here. And we'll try to see if they have any family ties here to Columbus, see if we can get in contact with any family, see if they're able to stay with them. Or to see if we can secure transportation, verify first that they have someone out of town, that they're saying, hey, yes, they can stay. Then we'll see if we can get them transportation to that family member.
So what if you're unsuccessful with that? What happens?
I can honestly tell you, it's a work in progress. Every stepping stone, every stone we come across is, we have to figure out another plan.
Thank you.
Talk about some of the ways, the reasons people deny the service. Kind of mental and drugs and those kinds of things.
Number one thing is, they don't know, they do not want to follow any rules. They want the freedom. Even if they go to a shelter, they know that there are rules that they have to abide by, and they do not want to do that at all. A lot of people, especially individuals with, with mental health disabilities, they self-medicate with drugs and alcohol. You cannot do that in a shelter. A lot of them, they do not, they, they say they want to go to treatment, but at that point, they're saying that to get off the street. But then when they want to self-medicate again, then they'll leave. So it's really difficult, you know, to try to stabilize that.
How, how many people do we have right now that we have verified as homeless in our community?
That would be a Pat Frey question, because she has the stats from the point-in-time count that we did this, thoroughly this year.
Yes, and in our point-in-time count, we had 303 that were identified as homeless on the night of the count. And we know that's a, that's a day in time. It's a, it's a floating number. Had over, excuse me, we had over 50 of those individuals that were considered unsheltered or, or in places not meant for human habitation.
Counselor Chambers?
Yes, so let me just say, I appreciate everything that you do, you and Ms. Frey. The reason me for asking those questions is because we, my, my concern is making sure that we have a place, whether that's through affordable housing or some other source. And you know, I, I mean, the jails are overpopulated. So that, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Short, thanks for which, everything that you and your team that you do is definitely needed, because we want a safe, clean community. But I just want to think we need to figure out, how do we house these individuals? That, that's my concern. So I appreciate everything that you, you and your team are doing. But next steps, I mean, we should have a facility or some type of place to house these individuals.
Correct, no, and, and I totally agree with you. I mean, the main thing is funding. And again, affordable housing. I look at it like this, it's hard to house someone who's making $50,000 a year, let alone a homeless, excuse me, a homeless person. So it's on bo, it's on both sides. I mean, it's affordable housing all across the board and funding.
Counselor Hickey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for what you do, and to CPD and Ms. Frey. Thank Ms. Ms. Short. We thank, we thank all, you know, thank all of you for what you do. Yeah, this, this, this is a real sensitive and tough situation. And I agree with my colleague, Councilman Chambers. I, I would love to see the city take the initiative to, to try to come up with, I don't know whether we got some vacant properties out here or something that we, that, that we can do. Maybe we can partner with the school district. I know that St. Mary's Road Magnum Academy is empty now, because they built the new school, the Mayor Buckner School over in East Columbus, off North Star. And I know that, that, that school has a kitchen. I don't know whether that could be something we could do with, with the school board to try to partner with them and use some, some of the, the, the community funds that we have available, community care funds that we have available to try to put something in place and give the assistance to you all and the PD currently. When, as Councilman Chambers said, when the comes, when the situation arrived where someone need to be placed, this possibly could be a location that we can temporarily place somebody. And when you don't have any other alternative. Because I work in the mental health field, and I do know that a lot of people refuse services. They refuse help. And, and a lot of times, there's nothing you can do about that. But I think if we had an alternative location, where when we clean these sites up and we give notices, if the person don't have a place to go, maybe if we had something already set up, and I think Councilman Garrett mentioned something last, Councilman, about, you know, a place where we can just, central location where we can take people, and, and we can provide police security there or part-time, they can work there to make sure things are going well. And then also, you have a full kitchen where you can feed people. I mean, you know, seriously, you know, I mean, we can, we can, we can cook a pot of soup, get some rolls, cornbread, have you want to, to feed people. But we can get people in and out of the heat during high-temperature days like now and/or when it's cold. We can get people a chance to get inside somewhere out of the cold. But I, I just would love to see that, that as a city. And I know that we have the resources that we could do it. But I know it would, it would take a partnership, probably with the school board or a public-private partnership that we do with some business owners or some corporations here in town, to where we can bring, pull everybody together at the table. And I know my, my colleague, our Councilman Crabbe, she's working on this and everything. And collectively, if we could just put our heads together and bring our ideas together, I think that to, to answer a lot of the concerns that we have here on council, and then also people in the community, our citizens, what they have as well. Because it's important also to make sure that the public is being kept safe as well, you know? And that's why I say this is a very sensitive issue, you know? As my colleague, Councilman Tucker had said previously, you know, over in Shirley Winston Park, and if, if anybody know where Shirley Winston Park is, I'm pretty sure most of everybody here or those that are listening know, it sits down in a valley off Steamwell Road, off, from a main road. And if you got people camping along the walking trails, and you got elderly people going out trying to get their morning strove in, and, and I'm, and I'm just telling you, when, when a mental health person is non-compliant on their medication, and depending on what their diagnosis is, if they're hearing voices or something like that, and them voices telling them to attack somebody or to hurt somebody, you know, that, 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 that could be a very traumatic and bad time for that person that's being placed in that situation. And I know we don't have all the answers, but I think as a collective body here, working with everybody else, let us, let us start really looking at, you know, partnering with the school board, seeing how many empty school buildings they have. What other buildings we have on city property? And there may be an opportunity that we may have some vacant land somewhere that we can come in and we may build something, you know? And, and, and hire people to run it, and it'd be a temporary shelter for what you all are doing right now. So when, so that, just like Councilman Chambers was just saying, where do these people go? You know, when all else is failed, where do they go? And, and trust me, I, I understand. You know, you, you run out of things and resources to do and trying to help people, but I think that we can be doing a little bit more as a council. I think we can, you know? And so I, I would just challenge, you know, each and every one of us up here, all of my colleagues, the mayor, the deputy city manager. I would just challenge everybody, let's, let, let us put our heads together, just try to help with this, because this is a very, very sensitive situation. And, and, and let me just say this to everybody. You know, when you wake up every morning, God bless you to do that. You know, my dad used to always say that it's not the alarm clock that wake you up. It's God wake you up, hit the alarm clock. And when you wake up in the morning, and you're in your right mind, you got your health and strength, you way ahead of the curve than a whole lot of people that are out here suffering with different issues. you way ahead of the curve than a whole lot of people that are out here suffering with different issues. And let it be known that all of us, we one step away to probably having our own issues and crisis. So let's have a heart of compassion. And I'm not saying nobody up here does, I know all my colleagues, I know y'all love, y'all got a lot of love in your heart, and that's why I'm just saying, let us, let us just dig deep into that heart of compassion. And let us work together to, to, to solve and fix this problem, you know. And we may not get it all the way one hundred percent correct and right, but I think if we start taking these steps forward, we may not get to a hundred right away, but we can work our ways towards it to where we got things in place and we can become that model city. You know, I know other cities and other states are doing different things, but right here in the state of Georgia, maybe we can, we, we, we can, uh, you know, become that, that, you know, that star for, yeah, what, just, just send, send us a, a standard here in the state of Georgia. But I just challenge and call on all of my colleagues, let us, let us seriously put our heads together on this and let's, let's help as much as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to work this, um, this teams. Um, I did want to reference, and I, I know Councilor Crabbe might have, um, Sergeant Katina Williams come up, but I wanna, I wanna reference a couple of things. Um, with, we have a continuum of care when you talk about this dealing with the homeless, um, community. And one, and not outside of the commu- continuum of care, you have people like Sergeant Katina Williams and her team. Just this week, she was able to get somebody in Motel Six. It was a family of four. Uh, that happens often. And when Chief made that comment about Sergeant Williams and her team are dealing with ninety percent of these cases, I think that it's best to pull Sergeant Williams up and hear her perspective to Counselor Chambers' question um, regarding what happens when two-one-one can't fulfill the need of finding a place for them in a shelter. Most of these i- individuals, and I agree because this is exactly what I've done for years, is help homeless veterans. They are not ready to, some of them, most of them aren't ready to move into a home. Um, we talking about affordable housing, those are two totally different conversations. Um, you have to give individuals wraparound services. For the most part, we use a housing first, um, concept. We have been using that for years and years and years. Uh, and you get them housed and then you provide whatever mental health or, um, addictive, you know, camp, counseling or treatment. You provide them all the services that they need. Uh, uh, you, we talking about food stamps, you know, just everything. But it's, it's a, it's multi-conversations going on. And we have a continuum of care that deals with all these multiple conversations. And they meet, I think on a monthly basis, I know they used to meet on a monthly basis. Um, but it's so much going on that most people don't see, just like it's a lot of stuff going on at Goodwill that we don't see. Um, and slash the city. It's a lot that goes on when you're talking about this continuum of care. And I, I think that's where the disconnect in the conversation began because we kind of started going, it looks like an octopus, you got all these different arms. Um, however, when you have individuals like Sergeant Williams, she's getting food, she's not, she's pa- paying for food out of her own pocket. She's not getting reimbursed for that. Um, she's helping people find, when we don't have a shelter, find a hotel, get a hotel room for individuals, like exactly what's being said. We're not leaving the individual out there, especially if you're in social services. You care about that individual just as probably more than they really care about themselves. So you're, you're not leaving the human aspect out of it. You're actually, especially in so- social service work, you're making sure you address those needs and concerns. And then you have our law enforcement, um, and they're out there addressing it as well. Um, so I, I just, I just think that, yes, we can do a lot of great things and have all those conversations about food and affordable housing, but we, we kind of need to streamline, streamline this conversation in what this ordinance is and what the actual process is. And that's one of the things that I mentioned, you think about it like a day in the life. So step one, you had, um, uh, Ms. Drell Short speaking. She's getting called and she's getting involved in it. So you get a three-one-one call or a nine-one-one call to identify, to say that, hey, we have this encampment. You know, I get citizens ca- calling me in my district about, and it's not no big encampment, but tents on Shirley Beach. But if you have a for real encampment, you getting a call, be a three-one-one or nine-one-one. They go out and exactly what, what was mentioned, they are identifying whether this is on city property, on pu- on public property. And then those next steps are being addressed, whether CPD, um, Home for Good, those individuals are brought in. And then we're doing the human aspect, especially with the, the Home for Good portion, is ensuring that, that homeless in- individual services are trying to be provided. And I appreciate, and I don't know if it's another slide that's gonna be, um, provided, but I was asking for infographic that would show how steps one through five work, meaning a three-one-one or nine-one-one call is made. You know, how, when the, the encampment is, is found. And then how we progress throughout, like showing those steps. That way people can see exactly what's going on. But we have many services and I, I just really want that to be heard, many services through our continuum of care. And Pat has been over that. She actually trained me when I came into the social service world back in twenty thirteen, fourteen. So it's this, I'm gonna say, community, family, and of course, we had the homeless, um, resource network and, and I, and that really, that hub was great and definitely needed. But those, like I said, those are, are additional conversations that we can have on the side. They have a plan, they've been doing this plan. The ordinance has already been out there and we've been, it's been on the books. The only thing that has not been mentioned in the ordinance is the encampment word, the urban camps. But everything else in the ordinance has been there. So it's, I don't know if we can pull it back and get to exactly what happens, like step one, three-one-one, nine-one-one is called, and then how we go from there to, you know, dealing exactly what Counselor Chambers mentioned. What happens when you don't have shelter? You know, how do you reach out to those community partners or people that's within that continuum of care, um, outside of that? And philanthropists that provide funds for individuals to go to, to the hotel? I don't even think, I know it was mentioned, but it happens more often. And I'm trying to get Sergeant Williams, I don't know when she, her cue is to come up, but she just handled this and I would like to hear her say what happens when she goes out to these areas because she's dealing with this firsthand on the law enforcement side. So I would love to hear from Sergeant Katina Williams.
Thank you, Counselor, and we, and we will, we'll, we'll call her up in just a moment. Uh, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank my colleagues for mentioning several times about how sensitive this matter is, and it is. Um, it's a matter that a lot of people don't want to talk about, but you gotta have the conversation. There's no way to, I'd get around, everybody, uh, you know, everybody takes a different position on it. I heard some things last time we were here that it seemed like extreme, far extreme type situations. But let me just say this, I'm proud, I'm proud of our community because I know we have some good organizations. And I've been out before with the team, so to speak, or all the departments that you're starting to hear of how they work and how they address some of these issues. I've been out there with them. And I can tell you compassion and dignity is at the, at the forefront, always. And they're always trying to find options to help people. And we've got some great organizations in our community. And my family have supported them and will continue to support them. And they do a heck of a job, but they're challenged and they're overwhelmed. And they've got, uh, you know, i- i- it's not that easy. But, you know, we all as a society, and, and we see it across the country, we see it on the national news. We, we as a society under, see what's going on. And there are challenges where you tend to cross a line that we all have to abide by. I mean, we're all citizens of the community and we have to abide in a certain way. And we have to follow the rules and regulations and the guidelines. And I think it was mentioned earlier about, you said, you stated, one of the reasons that a lot of people are, are still unhomed is because they don't want to abide by the rules. They don't want any rules. They won't want to do, they don't want to deal with changes. Now, I don't, I, I, I'm not out there seeing it exactly what it is, but when I read the statistics, there are some alarming numbers that, that, uh, um, that we deal with as a community and a large part of that is mental health. Twenty-eight plus percent. One of the largest ones that really concerns me, I don't think we're even focusing on this, but one of the largest, and correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the largest parts of the unhomed or the homeless is single mothers with children.
You are correct.
That is increasing in our community at a rapid pace. That should sound an alarm. It's not individuals, it's in those areas that a majority, well over fifty, sixty percent of our unhomed or homeless challenges are in that area. And we do have limited resources and limited places where they can go. So we do know that our country is providing innovative, you know, people are starting to, i- i- look, as time goes by, you're gonna, you know, more and more, you're gonna have to find creative ways and innovative ways to address these matters. Uh, we've talked about it several times with, with the ARP money, we tried to do some things. It would, you know, it didn't, it is working out, but specifically, directly at, at, at those that are extremely challenged, i- it's, you know, we're not there yet. Um, I see what people like Tunnels to Towers doing in communities. I mean, that's not, that's a simple solution that they're doing and it's working. Those kind of things are working. Uh, cities are, are doing these, these little villages and tiny homes. But look, the, uh, our city is not in the management business and we're gonna, this has to be a public-private partnership. We can't, we cannot manage those type situations. We're not gonna do a good job. That's not, our people are not trained for that. You're gonna need another sector of our community and professional people that deal with it, like yourself, that deal with this stuff every day to, to, to address that. And, you know, creating that public-private partnership, we need to start thinking about that, we really do, in addressing that. And then, you know, I wanted to, uh, sincerely thank City Manager Goodwin, uh, Home for Good, Director Browder, uh, Director Short. I've worked with them before and y'all have been just incredible. Uh, and, and meeting the needs and addressing those, I mean, just, i- i- and we saw some of the statistics up here today or some of the numbers in, in doing that. So I really appreciate, again, like I started off, dignity and compassion is at the forefront. And I know that because I've seen it and the concerns of people. But Mayor, what really, what, what I really kind of caught my attention, and I'm just gonna put it out on the table here today because it needs to be addressed. When you, when you look at what we've talked about, the number of homeless in the past, it was in the low two hundreds. But I just heard you say it's over three hundred.
Correct, during our point in time count for this year, yes, sir.
That's right. And if you go in the past, I mean, you can go online, look all this stuff up. We've talked about, I think the last time that, uh, Pat Frey came to us, she told us it was in the low, uh, it might have been a year and a half ago or two years ago, we were over at the school district building, but she did tell us it was in the low two hundreds. I mean, you can do the research online, it still says that, but you just told us it's approaching over three hundred. That concerns me. And you also stated that, uh, people are being bused into our community. And Mayor, this is something I just want to have this conversation because I'm hearing in the community, whether it's secondhand information or rumors or whatever. I know in the conversation we had previously, I talked about, it seemed like there was an increased presence, a more visible presence in the community to the point that you're like, you know, faces that I would see all the time. And I know in the area that I represent, you know, I've know a lot of these people, but I see a lot of different people. And we're being told that other counties, other municipalities are busing in, and, and I don't want to say it's wrong, but their challenges, you know, they're basically giving them to us. And we gotta deal with that. I'm being told that, that that's happening, whether by individually or collectively, that that's happening in our community. Now, I don't know, but I want to ask that question, is that true? And it was just stated that, you know, that people are being bused into our community. I'm being told that other surrounding counties are sending them to us to deal with these matters, for whatever reason. Whether we have more resources or they just deal with their problems different. They just send them in our direction, which is gonna be more challenging and more burdensome for us as a municipality to address. I mean, I, I think that really needs to be looked at if, if that is true. I don't know, but I would think that some of the people around here would have a better insight to that and would know if that's true or not. And I think I've heard from some very credible people from that standpoint. So, um, i- if that's happening, then we're, you know, we're gonna be dealing with a lot more of this on a, on a lot more reg- basis. But it comes to a standpoint of where, you know, uh, the, the, the extreme cases are ones that I know are involving public safety, where there's challenges there, threats of many kinds, or public health, or public destruction, or the visible intrusiveness of the, you saw the encampments. That's where people, it starts crossing, people start getting a little sensitive about it. And you got people on both sides. And most people, I believe in Columbus, just won't, they're okay with people finding a place to stay, but they're not okay with destruction of property and just, you know, causing a matter that becomes more of a community matter. Because there's things that I can't do, you can't do, and others you can't do because it's a violation. And we're trying to do things to, to clean up our community. But, um, I, I, I'm just grateful to those who are there that can help and assist in this way. And if we need to continue to find those, I, I'm all for finding those innovative ways. And right now, a lot of people don't know, we're working on our, our jail facility and trying to come up with a concept of that. You know, where you wouldn't incarcerate people that don't need to be. Right now, the only thing we got is what we have. And that's the only place sometimes to take people. And yeah, they get mixed into a population that they don't need to be part of. But that's all we have and they do the best they can. But having that new facility where you have the extreme here and then you have the people that have mental health challenges, they need help, addictions, things like that, the homeless, the unhomed, people like that, the needs, that that part of the facility can help and address those specifically where it's more in a non-threatening environment with professionals there and people who can help them and get them. I'd like to see that, I really would like to see that. It's up to the citizens to be able to do it. It's gonna cost some money, but there's already talk about doing that to, to modernize or innovate our, uh, our, our jail that we're gonna, I mean, we're, we're gonna have to do something as a community, we got to. Uh, that, we, we've got that sledgehammer of the DOJ on us all, all the time. And it's just, at any moment, they can come in and tell us that, that we're gonna have to change. Uh, I'd also like to see satellite, kind of satellite. us that we're gonna have to change. I'd also like to see satellite, kind of satellite innovative places where people, so we can take the burdens off our hospitals and emergency rooms. Look, let me tell you what, if they can't make their numbers and they have to shut down, think about that. Think about if we lose one hospital. Think about the seriousness of that. And those are major job generators in our community. But we're already starting firing EMS. We're starting a new deal where we're taking the help to a lot of the people who are out there, the unhomed, trying to help them. That's a new way. We're gonna fund it and we're gonna do that. But what about other people with challenges that need to get these places? Maybe we can do like satellite areas of where people can go and get help, whether it's on the south or north or east-west, and maybe do those things. But it's gonna take resources and commitment and, you know, I think maybe those are things as we move forward, a number of the challenges our city has to address, that we need to include those things. But I say it, Mayor, I mean, financial resources are one thing, but public-private partnerships and doing the management side of it, there's gotta be a management component to this in order to make it work. Because we don't do, our municipality as a city, we can't do that. I mean, we're just not structured to do that.
Well, I think it'd be a good start. I agree.
I mean, I'd like to know if that is true, what I just asked that question about what's happening in our community. I mean, we talk about it out there, but let's talk about it here. Is that really happening?
As far as...
Where people are sending us their problems?
I can say that with the clients that I have had in contact with, had contact with, stated that they were actually here, I shouldn't have said bused, but actually here as far as relationships or failed relationships and they have no way to get back on. Or they were just picked up from another state doing, making, doing something they weren't supposed to be doing and just got dropped off, if you get where I'm coming from. So, that's what, again, I shouldn't have stated bused, but they were brought here as far as if it was a failed relationship or if they were doing something and they had a disagreement.
Right. Well, and statistically, again, the numbers, like I just said, there's a, what, 75 head count, there's 75 more, if that's what we're saying, it's over 300 now. That's over the last two years, 75 more individuals or families or unhomed people that we're talking about, that's in need. So, is that true? Is, I mean, has there been an increase in the last two years?
Yes. Yes, it has been an increase. And again, it has been family, excuse me, family as far as women and children. It has been an increase. You are correct. And it could come from multiple reasons as far as if it's domestic violence or if it's a mental health problem, or if they just cannot afford housing at all.
The bottom line is, there's a wide variety of reasons that folks relocate somewhere else. So, you too, sir?
Well, I was gonna say, if I, I mean, I don't know if anybody just doesn't want to really address that, but if it is happening, that's something we need to, we need to deal with that. And I would think that, you know, that the council's on one side, but on the executive administration side or through public safety, we really need to address those things. If, if the information we're hearing from out in the community is truly happening, because you can just keep, I mean, you can keep trying to deal with it, it just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. We have to figure out the best way to address it.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Garrett?
Thank you. I'll try and make it, this a little bit quicker, but three things I think we need to tackle. One, obviously, we need permanent affordable housing and tiny homes and changing some of our existing ordinances to make that more favorable is one of those things. And I will tell you, we as a council are gonna have to be brave on this because I was a political science major and we had an entire course about NIMBY, not in my backyard. And every time affordable housing's brought up, everyone says, no, 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 not near my neighborhood. We have to balance the public interest with that. We've got to balance that we have a limited space in this city and we have to keep that in mind. The other aspect is people who right now are off the grid, at least probably half of those, are related to substance abuse. We do not have adequate sober living in Columbus. We don't. It's a, it's something that other cities have, private developers coming and put that in, same issue, not in my backyard. But it's something we have to invest in and we have to make available because most people who suffer from addiction don't want that life. They want a better life, but they need an opportunity. They may not have a support system and they need help and they need people that can support them when they don't have family or friends and that's what sober living does. And then, I do agree that there are people who want to live off the grid and that's okay, if somebody wants to live off the grid. But we have to balance sanitation, safety, and making our community appealing. And it does frustrate me when I do see people who look very much capable of working, that are trashing Manchester Expressway across from the Chick-fil-A every single day, asking for money. And I'm looking at them and there's some people who are truly in need and you can tell that there's some mental issues there. And there may be something going on I don't know about, but that's not okay. But what is necessary, we do have to provide, and I like Counselor Hickey's idea about retrofitting, something to provide some type of temporary housing, but in the absence of that, I think we do need to look for a piece of land where people, if they just don't want to be in a permanent housing, they can camp safely, but we also need to make that in an area. It needs to be kind of comprehensive because that cycle's gonna repeat itself if we don't put it within walking distance of healthcare, whether that be like a MercyMed-type facility. And also jobs, I think we need to zone around wherever we find this area, if there's available land, to make it more favorable for folks that get tax credits for hiring second chance folks who have come out of prison, so that some of these people who are homeless, because they can't find a job, have some opportunities within walking distance. And then my last point on that, I want to make it as self-sufficient as possible, providing the absolute basics. MercyMed and Food Mill have done an amazing job with community gardens. Several neighborhoods in my district have community gardens that people love. If we can do it where we can, WCA Manager Goodwin, if we can find a piece of land where there's something that is plantable and we can give folks access to growing their own food and providing the basics, clean water for drinking, restrooms, and, you know, give folks at least the basics. But then if they don't, if they choose not to take what we're giving them that is an upgrade from just camping on the side of the road, then I do agree, that's not acceptable for our city. It's not okay for people to trash the side of the road and to make things nice where we can attract businesses to help bring people out of poverty. But we do need to come up with a plan and we need to make it comprehensive. It needs to include zoning, healthcare, access to food, not being in a food desert. And ideally, some idea of self-sustainability with maybe a community garden, that type of thing, maybe some solar power, so that we can make this truly self-sustaining. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Pat Frey wanted to weigh in. Pat, you there?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you. And, and, and yes, this is a very, very difficult conversation, but one, I'm honored to be part of and the fact that it's been brought up more than one time, that this is a multi-tiered issue, a multi-layer of concerns, and it's going to take a multi-layer of, you know, solutions. And, and all of these thoughts and ideas are right on line with having that multifaceted approach to handling the concerns of our community. And I'm gonna address Counselor Davis. I can just tell you of one particular incident where a sheriff's department literally drove someone from another county and dropped them off at Safe House on a Wednesday afternoon, just after 3 o'clock. And when the staff member said, you can't leave this person here, this was a wheelchair-bound person to add to it. And they were handed the card from the sheriff of that county and said, if you have a problem, the sheriff said to call him. I did mention this and I did have a conversation with Sheriff Countryman, who was going to address that chair. But so, those things, that they have happened, yes. And there are other ways that people are getting here from other areas and other localities. Absolutely, it is happening. So, that is another thing. So, again, it's a multi-layered issue and, you know, I would, I would challenge that we have to come back to the table and perhaps form a very small, a very small task force led by someone who can give a, give us guidance and perspective on all of the issues. We need to have a complete gap analysis. I know you all know that we've been working on how the market needs assessment. We just conducted with the Game Center, a sequential intercept workshop where we talked about the intersection of law enforcement, re-entry, criminal activity, and homelessness. That draft report is out now and I actually put a note here to have it as soon as we finalize that report, to bring it. All of these, in addition to, yes, not having a crisis stabilization unit here in our area is huge. So, those folks are backed up in the ER and when they're released, they're unfortunately back on the street and the cycle continues. The lack of emergency shelter availability because there is a bottleneck in getting out of a shelter into affordable housing. Again, multi, multi-issues. I would urge you to authorize a task force to start looking at all of these issues and coming up with a way to, to start chipping away. We're not gonna have all the answers at once and we're not gonna have every solution right on time. You know, building affordable housing or sober living or those are gonna take years. But as we start with quick wins, I think we can start seeing some change in this. And yes, to address the number, the question about the numbers, yes, we, in 2025, our number is exactly the same as it was in 2016. We were decreasing from 2016 down to 2021. In 2022, we saw the numbers increase again, and it's been a steady increase since then. So, we're, we're up 11% from where we were just in 2024. We had a low of, Counselor Davis was right, of 239 is as low as it's been since I've been with the organization, which was 2016. And we have had, yes, an increase of females or families with minor children. We went, we've been up, we're up 218% from 2016. And those households experiencing homelessness, for the most part, are because they have been evicted due to unable to keep up with the rate of rent. We've seen an increase of 43% increase in rents from 2021 through the first quarter of 2025.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. All right, we've got Counselor Kogel, then Counselor Crabbe, then Counselor Huff, and then we'll bring up Katina from CPD. Counselor Kogel?
Well, Pat, Pat kind of summarized what I wanted to bring up of, you know, we're not rein, I don't think that we need to reinvent the wheel necessarily. I think it's really great that we all brainstorm and see, you know, what else we can do for our community. But I would really like, exactly what Pat is saying, is to consolidate what some of the other cities are doing and piece together what would work better for our community. What works better, what works for Atlanta might not be 100% work for Columbus or what works for Macon. There may be pieces in their solution that works better for Columbus, but if we can consolidate what we are doing, what other communities are doing across the nation, because it's a, it's a national problem. And I think the root of the problem, as has been discussed here, is, is mental health. And, and that's not a, that's not an easy fix and I don't think that that's gonna go, it's not gonna go away overnight. And so, going and bringing back a whole bunch of ideas and that may be what we ask Pat and her team to do, because, you know, that's, they deal with it head-on every day and they're, they know what other communities are doing. So, consolidating, consolidating what other people are doing so that we can piece it together. I do, I do agree with Counselor Davis on that this is gonna take a lot of public-private partnership because simply creating more places for these disadvantaged people to go to. One of the reasons that they're not going to the facilities that we have available is because they don't want to abide by the rules. And so, I think we're riding a slippery slope here on, on, do we, and we certainly need more, more facilities for people to go to, but we need to make sure that those facilities have some sort of rules and regulations within them that maybe are a little bit less than some of the other facilities, but still have some lawfulness to them, or else we're going to create a larger problem for ourselves long-term. And to Counselor Garrett's point, I mean, we, we have a affordable housing problem. It's brought up on pretty much every council meeting and that is something that we need to look at as well, from a, from a big picture. And whether we have a lot of really great entities within our city that do that already, but we do need to, as a city, accept that that needs to be a community-driven project. So, I would like, Pat, just to bring it all together, I, Pat, I would like it if you and your team and the other entities that you work with were be able to bring back in the future what other communities are doing to combat this problem, what works for them, what doesn't work for them, so that we can, even in a work session, we can, we can pull that apart and create a, create a plan that might work better for our city moving forward.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. This has been great discussion. I think that what happens is, we know that there's a problem, but until some, something boils it up and brings it up to the surface, we're just happy allowing it to, you know, work silently like software in the, in the side. I, for 35 years now, I've been in the housing industry. I'm a property manager and I sell real estate. And what I've tried to do during that timeframe is be efficient, be effective in my management to keep the costs down so that the landlords in turn can keep the costs down. And that is how I try and keep supporting, you know, affordable housing, because we'll get to the point, and we've seen it a couple times in our, you know, Travis and I came in to real estate about the same time in Columbus, and we've seen the ups and downs of where the prices go high and then they'll drop and then they'll go higher. And they've, it's continually going higher all the time for different reasons that we won't go into. But we try to control it for everybody's sake because we are a community where we have soldiers that come in and out. And if we allow the housing market here in Columbus to go too high, then we're gonna hurt the people that come in here for short periods of time and then have to try and sell their houses. And we have to, we have to kind of watch and keep, and National Association of Realtors, the Columbus Board of Realtors, we all work on that. So, take my real estate hat off for a little bit and put my counselor hat on. I'm looking for ways from this chair, what we can do to help with affordable housing. And one of the main things that I'd really like to do is get a group together and work with planning and codes and inspections, because we can change maybe some of the rules of our zoning here in Columbus and that can help us. And that can help us to open up some more affordable housing. You know, John Hutchinson used to talk about tiny homes. Well, we never, we never took it, we'd never picked up that ball and ran with it. We used to have patio homes, which was a form of affordable housing. Smaller lot lines, houses closer together, but at least they, you know, they were good entry level or they're great for entry level and they're great for, you know, maybe a widow or a widower that needs to downsize. So there's pockets of affordable housing that we could create by working on our zoning laws. So that's something that I'd like to work on. So there's a lot of, there's, this is like somebody mentioned, this is like an octopus. There are many tentacles that go out that we need to work on, but I'd like to kind of bring us all back in to this ordinance right now. And I think that this is a number, this is like step number one that we can do in order to help with all the other tentacles that are going out. And the reason why this ordinance is an important starting point is because Savannah and Atlanta and Phoenix City have already passed laws similar to this one. We can anticipate that those cities and others, they're already doing it, they're already bringing people to our city, and it's already starting to overtax our services. And so we need to get ahead of that. We need to be proactive. We need to create an environment for the social services, for the police department, and for our, for our public works to be able to work within. Because when they're, then when they're pulled off of their normal routes of picking up our trash to clean up an encampment, then it affects all of the citizens because they haven't been able to go and pick up our trash. There's so many things that happens. And so I'd like to get us, I'd love to hear from Katina and the community policing aspect of this, because I do think that they have a very good program in place that they're working and it, and it is a compassionate, caring program and how they work. And I believe that this ordinance supports everything that's already been implemented and it empowers them to continue to do the great job they're doing and even help them to do a better job.
Councilor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. I saw Attorney Anthony Johnson in the audience, and he had mentioned some things last time he was here. But I had a thought process going here. I've met some people over the past two years that were battling with homelessness, but their problem was they had been incarcerated, cleared, finished their probation, but the records have never been cleared. And I didn't know if we had thought about that or looked into the fact of we need, I'm personally asking the question, what do we do better to get records cleared to prevent these people from being caught where they can't afford to have affordable housing and get them back into the real world? I've met some people that are lucky enough to have a good wife or a good girlfriend and have a place to live, but still they are kind of pigeonholed into being short-order cooks and things around town. And they are qualified to do a lot of things, but everywhere they interview, it still shows up on their record that they have not cleared their probation and everything that was required. So the last person I spoke with had finished 10 years ago. So I know that may not be a question that you can answer, you may, but if you can or if there's anybody here from Public Safety or Anthony Johnson, if you've run across that.
But Ms. Johnson, if you'll give us just a minute, we had already kind of set an order we're going to try to go through, make sure some folks have been waiting.
Okay.
If that's okay, but we'll come back to him right, right after Councilor.
I just, yeah.
Let's, let's, let's hear from Sergeant Williams. I know that you had. We'll get back to that, but I mean, just me, I just, they've been waiting out there for a long time and so if we could. Is that all, sir?
Yeah, I'm good. I just need to.
We'll get Mr. Johnson up too. I just think we need to get these folks first. Thought I saw Sergeant Williams. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you all for having us here today. As far as CPD's part in the process of assisting our homeless residents here in Columbus, we, sometimes we go out there and we find the encampments or we make contact with the homeless people. We don't just get referrals from 311 or Home for Good. We make contact, first contact on our own. But I can say that we do more than just assist City Works and Home for Good with making sure they're safe when they get to the scene. We get out there, we speak to the homeless community, we respect them, we buy food for them, we find places for them to stay. If we can't get in touch with Ms. Pat Frye or Ms. Tereka Barnes, I've got private and public people that I can call that'll actually put them up in hotels depending on what area of town they're in. This last incident that we had was on last Friday. We had a woman and her three children. She had a 24-year-old adult son that was disabled and she was refused at the homeless shelter because of his age, but his mental capacity wasn't there. He's with her full-time, she's his caretaker, he gets disability. They were turned down at a local shelter. Within 15 minutes, we had them a place to stay called. Called up somebody else in the community that cares like we do for assistance. They were willing to put this woman and her children up in a hotel. For two weeks. This young lady said, I only need services for a week. So they put her up in a hotel to August first. These guys, they were there. We witnessed this every day. I'm sorry, but I'm very compassionate about my work in the community, whether it's with the homeless or whoever. I can tell you now, each and every one of us encounter people every day in this community that we do something to help them, not hinder them, or we're not just there to put them in jail. We're not there to make them leave the scene. Right before the Fourth of July, July 3rd, we encountered a family that was over here in Columbus from Phoenix City, the apartment complex that was shut down by the city of Phoenix City, Ebson Estates, I think it was. We had a family of three that we, we didn't put them out from the bridge on Victory Drive. We didn't make them leave on July 3rd when we knew that all the services were closed down, anybody that could help them, Home for Good. We couldn't call anybody on the third or the fourth to get this family some help. So on July 3rd, I told them, this is my card, this is my work cell phone number. If you encounter anybody that's trying to make you leave, other law enforcement agencies or within CPD, give me a call, I'll speak on your behalf. And that's what we did. We spoke on their behalf and we received those calls. But I can tell you now, we didn't make them leave. I told them, I gave them my word, we'll be back on Tuesday next week. When we come back to work, the first thing we'll do is make sure you all get some help, get some services. I called up Ms. Pat Frye and her group. They came out, they met with us. We were able to help this family as much as we could, but they didn't want, they really didn't want the help that Home for Good had to offer. They didn't want their services. They left that location. One of the young ladies, I think she was about two months pregnant and she's got a two-month-old that defects had just come and taken from the encampment two weeks prior to us making contact with her. A two-month-old child living with her mother and she's two months pregnant. Of course she could have gotten services, she didn't want the services. They are living in the Sonics Building that's abandoned over on Victory Drive today. So that's what we're dealing with here in Columbus. Like you said, now you're seeing more single mothers with children. Mental health is what we've always seen, but I can tell you now, CPD is not there to just put people in jail. We're not there just to assist Public Works. We're not there just to assist Home for Good. We're there because we care. Because we care. My guys, we pray together, we believe in God, we care. Our chief cares, he backs us up on anything that we want to do in this community. He has personally come out of his pocket with his own money. These guys that work for me have come out of their pockets, they fed people, they put them up. We don't ever take a receipt to budget. If they've taken a receipt to budget to get their money back, they didn't tell me they did it. And if they did, that's on them, but I don't. I've never went to budget and said, I need my money back for a hotel, I need my money back for food, I need my money back for clothing or a coat that I bought for a kid or something, never. I've never been back to budget to get my money back. The only time I've gotten money back from budget was when I fed a prisoner. And that was not every time, that was only a few times. But these guys buy coats for kids, kids they meet at schools, kids they meet in neighborhoods, they buy clothing for them. Go to the grandmother's house, see what they need, buy groceries. We do a lot ourselves. CPD does a lot in this community. We do more than just police this community. We're here to serve people too. We're here today about the urban camping ordinance. And I read that ordinance and what I don't agree with is the giving them one hour to get their things and go. Every situation is different. If you've got a bike in a backpack, you can leave in an hour. But if you've got everything that you own in a tent or in a tarp, you can't leave in one hour. So I don't agree with the one hour, making a person leave in an hour, and that's on page three, number, letter C. That should be changed to, it should be based on the situation we're dealing with at the time. I'm not saying let them stay there three months.
I think Councilor Crabbe had modified that.
I think this is, this keeps on coming up and so maybe we need to clarify that language because what, the intent of it is that a minimum, so we're giving them, giving you a minimum of one hour. You can't remove them or you can't do anything to them until after that hour has passed. Two things happen. One is you have to give an oral or a written warning, which isn't in any of our ordinances now. And then secondly, you can't, you can't move them off prior to one hour. So that's not saying that you have to do it in an hour. It's giving you leeway, but I think, can we work on that, Lucy, so that we can get maybe a clear, so it's not misinterpreted? But so, so it's, it's, it's open-ended. You can't, it gives a minimum timeframe, but it doesn't give you an end timeframe. So you can work within that frame like what you're expecting, what you're explaining.
The only thing that needed to be clear up in the ordinance, because I totally didn't agree with one hour for every situation.
That's not, that's not how it, that may be how it sounds and we'll work on the wording of that, but that's not what the intention is. It is to give you guys the leeway, you know, to deal with each situation accordingly.
But we're here to help, you know, we got to understand homelessness is going to be a part of this community, it's not going to go anywhere for good, ever. You know, we all should understand that. And they're going, you know, we can't always make a person take the assistance from Home for Good. They, you know, if they don't want it, they just don't take it. We don't always just put them off the property right then if they become belligerent, you know, combative or, you know, we've had, I mean, I think we made maybe one arrest in the last year, and that was recently. But in addition to that arrest, if we'd made any more, it was because they had outstanding warrants and they had to be extra, they had a hold put on them if they were from out of town or if it was local, we transported them. So we don't just go out there and put homeless people in jail, so don't, don't think that's what CPD does. We do, we go out with Ms. Barnes and with Ms. Frye, we do provide security for them because sometimes the people they encounter are combative or just get right up in their face. We do go out with Public Works. You've got somebody on the bridge saying that they've been there 10 years, they're not leaving. We have to be there. Our presence alone sends them away. The gentleman on the bridge out there on 185 in Veterans Parkway, he gave them all kinds of trouble about being there and not leaving. When we showed up, he packed his buggies and he left the bridge. And sometimes all it takes is just our presence, but we do, we show compassion daily in these streets. People need it right now. I don't have anything else to say, but I do want to thank our chief of police for allowing us to go out there and do what we do every day, for his support. I mean, personally and professionally, he gives us 100% of his support. We have it, we know we have it. If I see something that's going on in this city and I think it's too big for my pockets, I can definitely go to him and he's been there for me. Thank you, Chief Mathis, we appreciate it. But we got a, we got a good group of people here that are trying to work with these people out here in the streets. And you know, I say these people, and I shouldn't say that because they are our people, they're just like us, they just had something happen in their life, put them out there in the streets. And that could be me or you any day. That's the way we should look at those people or the homeless people.
Thanks, Sergeant. And thank you for the way that, not just for the job you do, but for the way you do it. Councilor Chambers?
Yes, Sergeant Williams and your team, thank you for your passion, going the extra mile to make sure that people that are homeless are, you know, have a place to stay or taken care of. To me, that's invaluable. So we definitely have the right team and just keep your heart there and that just makes me feel good knowing that you guys out there are trying to assist and help those that are in need, because you're absolutely right. It can happen to any of us and we just need to be mindful of that. So thank you for your leadership and you and your team, and thank you all for what you do. Thank you.
All right. Councilor Huff?
Thank you and your team also for what you do, but I've had the opportunity and some of them will probably smile. I've been in the background some days watching them work and I've seen them at work doing things they didn't have to do and taking the lead to make sure that people were well. And I've even seen them taking care of pets around the town and making sure. I've offered to do some things and they declined and said, no, I have it, I'll take care of it. So I understand where you're coming from. It's time for all of us to have compassion for the people. It's a tough time for a lot of people. And I just, I just want to say thank you, I appreciate you all.
Councilor Hickey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Sergeant Williams, thank you for what you do and your team. And I just got a question I'd like to ask, Ms. Mayor. With our community fund that we have, it used to be called Engine Care Fund, with that fund there, is there any way that we could use some of those funds to amend their budget that when they're out here making contact with individuals that need assistance, that if they need to put them in a hotel or something like that, that they will have some funds available for them to do? Because I know that what they're doing now, coming out of their own pockets, is, I commend them for that and everything. Because I know, uh, that what they're doing now, coming out of their own pockets, uh, is, is, I commend them for that and everything. But I just, I, I would just like, I would just think that, you know, that we should have some resources that can be put in place for them to have, uh, uh, a pot of money or that they can go to and pull out to, to put somebody up for, uh, a day or two or a week or whatever, whatever the case may, may be, you know, to just help out. Uh, uh.
Yeah, I believe, and I'll leave it up to the, um, finance director, but I believe that the money that's already collected has to be used for that program, the Energy Care. Now, if you want to adjust the budget at some future time and take some of that money and set up a line item for just such a resource, you, you could. You can do it prospectively, but I don't think you can do it retrospectively.
Okay.
Let me, let me just say, let me just say, we, we're not asking for a refund. We're not asking for our money to be replaced.
Yeah, we, we know that.
But there's a resource there that's fine. We're gonna continue to do what we do for the people that we encounter every day regardless.
And, and, and we appreciate that. And, 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 but I still think that there should be something in place that in the event that you need to reach over and get it, is there, it's available for you to get, you know? Because listen, you know, my wife and I both career police detectives. I retired, I know y'all don't get paid a lot of money, okay? I mean, I, I didn't get rich at the police department, okay? But I'm grateful to God that he brought me from where I was to where I'm at now. So, but I commend you for what you're doing. But let us help if we can make that happen. That's all that I'm saying. Let, let, let us help so that when you do that, you, you'll be able to go, you know that you got something that you can go and get to help some, put somebody up, maybe for a few nights or a week or something like that.
I think when we look at somebody else's situation, you know, people talk about paying public safety. It's not the best, but some days you feel like too much is given.
That's right.
That's right.
That's right.
You already know what you gotta do.
That's right.
So.
That's right.
Some of the people we deal with in the streets, we feel like we have so much more than they do. So we do wanna help them.
That's right.
And we do just that.
That's right. But we just wanna be here as, as, as a resource for you that you can reach over if you need to, to help out. That's what we want.
We appreciate it, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Crabbe?
Draille and Tariqa, could you rise please? I'd like to acknowledge, um, the people that have come here and spoke with, about this and that continue to help with the homeless, um, in this community. And I wanna, I, I want to thank you guys very much for what you do.
All right.
Mayor, Chief, Chief Scarpa is here also. Uh, he has a presentation on the Columbus Correct Care Program and we do wanna just hear from him briefly.
Counselor, while the, uh, chief is coming up, I'm gonna call on Counselor Davis.
Sergeant Williams, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna touch on three things real quick. You know, it was said, in going back and doing some research and looking into it, other cities have, other Atlanta, Savannah, Athens, other cities, I can go down the list. You just do the, do the research, they've already got these rules, laws on the books. They're on the books. We're somewhat, when I looked at that, it seemed like we were a little archaic and we're behind again. But they already have these ordinances, uh, and rules on the books. They spread it out. Actually, if you go, you'll spread it out in different areas, you know, where instead of piecing it together, it's spread out in, in different areas. And you can look that up, but you know, that, it's, it's, you know, other, my point is other communities and other cities have challenges too, and they're, they're addressing the same thing. I, I do wanna give, this is a real-life scenario that we should think about on the other side of what we're talking about. But I think it does add relevance to the situation. But I, I know for a fact, for a fact, we, we talk about what we're trying to do in our communities. A lot about in South Columbus and development and redevelopment and things like that. We talk about that. But let me tell you what, South Columbus lost two iconic brands, iconic brands that wanted to do business in South Columbus. But the corporate executives from out of town, somewhere else came in and what they saw on private property, whether it was drug abuse, the way it was stated to me, the camping, the litter, the, the, the mess that was all over the place. All of a sudden, they changed their impression on Columbus, Georgia and South Columbus. So what we talk about in a different light does make a difference when you're talking about character in your community and helping out in other ways. It does matter. And other people see that. And that's not what we want. Um, we talk about spending funds for development and new places, but what about we be more creative and take the funds we have and deal with some of those issues in the areas that we're already trying to redevelop, like the Liberty District either in South Columbus? And if that is true, which I know it is for a fact, because I talked to some of these people and trying to get them back to the table. And I think they, they will come. But that resonated with them and they walked away and South Columbus missed a great opportunity that could have opened the door. When you get iconic brands coming in, it could have opened the door for more. That's a real-life story that you gotta think about. So, the last thing, Mayor, I, I do wanna, you know, this is evidently becoming a national topic. And I, I don't know where it's going, but I do know there's changes in HUD. There's changes in the community block development grants and things like that. There, there's changes there and I don't know if the money is being refocused and reprioritized to deal with this very subject of homelessness. It's out there, but it seems like that's the direction that our federal government's going now. The question is, you know, I, I don't know what they're gonna require. I don't know what they're looking for from the municipalities at this point. It's all new. But if there are things that they're looking for, guidelines and things that we need to do, I would hate to miss out on the grant money and the available funds that we can take and use to help people here in our community. If that's something that we have an opportunity to get and where it fits in, whether it's a task force or collectively, we all think about that. But the bits and pieces I'm reading, now, I, I don't want us to miss out on those kind of things because we didn't, we were, we were slow to the table. We're slow to make the changes necessary that we can get those grant funds. And that's gonna be key because those financial resources are gonna be very beneficial in, in helping our community. We can't miss out on that kind of stuff, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we had invited Chief Scarpa.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't wanna belabor a lengthy conversation. I'll just share this. Um, the Fire EMS Department's role is to respond and to, and we're in the people business. And our Columbus Correct Care Initiative, uh, responds to people all over the community, whether you're in Green Hills, a nice home in, in Green Island Hills or on a, on a cardboard box, cardboard box on Second Avenue. And I just wanted to share, we have, since we've built this initiative, earlier this year, we launched our first mobile integrated healthcare unit. And this car has been out in the streets since probably about the middle of February, so about four months or so. And I have a couple of slides, just two slides, uh, of data that I wanted to share with you about how it's going and where we're going with it. Uh, as you see on the screen, our effort is a collaborative effort. We don't work alone. Uh, we work with our partners across the community and have the privilege of working with a, a lot of folks in our community who helped make this project or this program a success. This unit, in the four months from April, excuse me, from February through June, uh, we had sixty-nine Fire EMS initiated referrals. This is, this is one individual in an SUV with our partner, uh, going to visit these people. Uh, we had data-initiated referrals of about a hundred and fifty-four. We visited, visited a hundred and sixty-one different addresses in the city for a total of three hundred and thirty visits over that timeframe. Time on task is about an hour, um, at each one of these visits. We enrolled seven users in our, that are high-utilizer users in our program. These are folks who call more than five times a year, in some cases, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty times a year. Those seven users, in the six months prior, called 911 eighty-seven times in six months prior to being enrolled in the program. Three months into the program, or while they were enrolled, in the first three months, we red, we reduced that usage to twenty-three calls for service in 911. It's a seventy-four percent reduction in usage of 911, uh, by responding. And we are, we are super, super early to have any really sustainable, good data to share with you. But the numbers look good. Uh, and I hope to, within a year's time, to be able to come back and share with you, uh, an even greater success story. But a seventy-four percent reduction in 911 usage in those people enrolled in, in the program and those, those seven individuals. Uh, again, we're make, that car is doing more than just our, what we intended. Uh, initially, we intended them to respond to the high-utilizer group. Uh, but what we found with all these referrals, uh, is that they're responding to a lot more than that. Uh, we're spending a lot of time at Ralston Towers, for example. Uh, we are doing everything that we can to support, uh, the resource, the needs in our community, including the homeless. The zip codes that we service are just there on the screen. As you can see, they're kinda spread out. Uh, forty-eight percent of our participants are male, fifty-two percent of them are, are female. Fifty-two percent of our participants are Caucasian, forty-eight percent are African-American. The age group serviced, you see represented there on the slide. Uh, the saddest part being, uh, two percent are ninety to ninety-nine-year-old people who are calling us, uh, having this service done, having these services provided. This is one car that's been on the street for four months or five months. Uh, we have plans to roll out another car. Uh, council has given me the, uh, the, the resources to fund another re, a unit. That vehicle has been ordered, it should be here this winter. Uh, we have, uh, you have funded the staffing for that unit. It will be provided, it will be staffed with one of our paramedics, as well as a mental health clinician from Valley Healthcare and a police officer from CPD. Uh, you all have provided the funding for that. We look to stand up that unit in January. And that unit is primarily going to respond to mental health issues. Uh, we anticipate, um, that a number of these will be associated with our homeless community. We look forward to that. We have two more units potentially in the pipeline based on how the data shakes out. Uh, we have initial reports from Senator Ossoff's office and Senator Warnock's office that they have, uh, initially given the green light to fund those units. Uh, that is all budget-dependent on the federal government and us accepting those funds in the future. But I just wanted to give you some initial data, this preliminary data on the Columbus Correct Care Program. It is highly successful. Uh, we are looking forward to greater success. We're in the process this summer of hiring a data analyst, which you all approved. Uh, we need to get funding for the software to support the data analysts, which we'll look for next budget. Uh, but we are excited and I'm happy to answer any questions in regards.
Chief, it's a great initiative. Uh, Counselor Huff? I'm sorry, I didn't see your mic on.
Thank you, Chief. Um, this reduces the number of times that the 911 is called and the fire trucks have to respond to the homes.
That's right. Every one of these calls, uh, would normally have been provided by a fire truck and an ambulance, potentially a police officer. Uh, all of these calls do not get any of those calls.
Okay, okay. Cause I, I remember a particular situation over the past five, six years now. I probably have seen you all come to check on them once or twice a month.
We have a number of those folks in our, in our community, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So the intent of this program is to visit those and to find the resources that they need without having to call them. Help and use the word in honor of our residents.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Chief, thank you. Oh, dear. Sorry, I probably turned it off.
That's okay.
It was a great proposal, you wanna do it again? No, I'm sorry about that. All right, well, listen, thank you, Chief. Thanks for waiting around to be able to add that too. Okay. All right. Lindsay, do you have something? Wait a minute. Hang on a minute, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, quickly, um, I'm asking counsel to amend page four of the minutes for July twenty-second. Under the public comments for item number three on the city attorney's agenda, where it's listed as Amy Borgen, it should have been listed as Amy Borton. And, um, I actually just noticed another typo that I made this morning. I listed the two resolutions as August twenty-ninth and it should be for July twenty-ninth.
I'm going to approve the minutes amended.
All right, as a motion approved, amended, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, they are, they are approved.
I'm going to approve the excuse absences.
Second.
Motion second to approve the absences of the two counselors who are excused. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I do have one final, just a little quick update on the city manager search. Um, sir? Well, we'd have to take a vote. This is not an open meeting. It's, um, it, it, we had some invitees that we could bring in, but.
I have a big question. We're referring to homelessness.
Yeah, and I get that, but I mean, I don't know, we don't, we're not, I'd have to allow the other people in there. I apologize. We will have a follow-up because I know, uh, Pat Frye was wanting to talk about re-entry as it applied to, um, to homelessness as well. And so we will do that at another time and bring her in here, because we'll get some of the folks from the re-entry commission too. Uh, sorry, counselor. All right, but, um, we are, I'm gonna give, I wanted to give a quick update on the search for city manager, just in an effort to be transparent, make sure everybody understands where we are. And I'm gonna read most of this. Um, uh, "In accordance with the Columbus charter, the mayor is charged with identifying and recommending to the council for approval a highly qualified candidate to fill the position of city manager when the position is vacant. As you know, I've procured the services of Mercer Group Associates to assist me in the recruitment process. Mercer Group team, team assigned to our search primarily works in Georgia and does more public sector executive search work in Georgia than any other firm doing business in the state. The search process is on schedule to begin advertising the vacancy on August twenty-second and is structured to allow input from the council and to gather input from community stakeholders, which you will be invited to identify. I've taken this approach in order to encourage your input early in the process and not just at the end when you'll be asked to approve the finalists I submit to you. So the next steps in the process include, first, asking each council member to identify two Columbus stakeholders or citizens to participate in electronic survey, which will solicit their input about their expectations of the new city manager and to participate in a group discussion by Zoom in which they will share their thoughts and suggestions with me about their survey responses and any matters they believe the mayor should know before recommending a new city manager candidate to you. If you wish to submit those two individuals, uh, you'll need to provide me their names and email addresses no later than August fifth. I'll forward them directly to Mercer Group Associates, who will contact the stakeholders about the survey process to be completed by August eleventh and Zoom event, which will be held at nine on August thirteenth. Mercer Group will provide me a summary report of the survey and Zoom discussions, which will assist us in selecting the right candidate for this important position. Second, I've directed the Mercer, Mercer Group to contact each of you by email to arrange a time when they can have a phone interview with each of you individually concerning your expected qualifications and qualities for the new city manager, as well as issues, the think, issues you think the new manager should address immediately and long-term when he or she begins the new job. Mercer Group will be contacting you this week to establish a time for your interview and will provide you a few questions before the interview that will guide your discussion. This is, this is, as I said, this is an if, effort to try to get counsel involved from the beginning and not just at the end when a, a recommendation is made. Um, so they'll be reaching out to you by phone to schedule that, that time. We also have a calendar showing the timeline that, uh, we should, should have passed around that way you can keep up with where we're supposed to be. And if, for whatever reason, we don't make it, we're not on that track. And if, for whatever reason, we don't make it, we're not on track, you will know same time I do. All right? And I think that wraps up. Okay, Counsel Tucker.
I just had something to ask you or someone in reference to parents who were, who had kids in the summer, the mayor's summer youth program that couldn't, that didn't pick up their certificates. Some are asking how do, how can they get their certificates?
I apologize, Counselor. I only heard about half of that.
Oh.
Lisa, can you, about the certificates for the summer program?
Yes, sir. Parents are asking, how can they get their certificates for the students if they didn't attend, I guess, that last event?
Yes, Counsel Tucker, we, we can get those certificates to them. I'll get with WIOA and make sure that they are sent their certificates. Won't be a problem.
Sorry, sorry about my audio.
No, that's fine, thank you. All right, is there any other business needs to come forward to counsel? All right, there's a motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. All right, we're adjourned. I don't know that we needed to do that.